She'll hear your applause from in the other room. I just wanted to acknowledge their presence, Judge Raddick's presence, and all of the consulate, other consulate generals joining us. I know we have the consulate general from St. Lucia and as well as from Jamaica present with us. I would also like to acknowledge the staff from the embassy of Barbados at Washington DC. Christabel, the MC and for Secretary William Clark. I would like to acknowledge the staff of the consulate general at New York. They're working around the clock on the floor at registration, but I would like to acknowledge them and thank them in the same breath for all the hard work they've done. Last but not least, I will introduce myself to you. I am the Deputy Consul General of Barbados at New York, the first Deputy Consul General. Thank you, Senior Minister Simmons. And the first female. Are there ladies in the house? I'm getting there. Because in introducing myself, I would like to just tell you a little bit about me. So that I've met some of you at some of the associations and I'm saying to you, you all are doing so much work. And when I was coming down the aisle just now, I was greeted by Kathy Elliott, the Mental Health. They've just done some wonderful work in Barbados as well. So I just want to acknowledge you girls. And they're from Springer Memorial, that's where he went. So my name is Lisa Jaganoth, Dr. Lisa Jaganoth. And prior to taking this job in February, I was a lecturer at the University of the West Indies Cave Hill Campus in the areas of sociology and social work. Outside of that, when I'm not teaching, I'm still falling in love with children because I have a charity that keeps me very busy and we particularly work with at-risk youths, those who may fall through the crack, those who may need a bit more support. And so that's what I'm doing when I'm not studying or working and I work very hard. The ones whom I've visited since I've been here can tell you that some weeks, there is no break in between. But this is the nature of the job and if part of my role here is to work with diaspora and to service as far as I can and to assist as far as I can Barbadians in the diaspora, then I will leave no stone unturned in doing so. I have visited some associations. When I first came, I was introduced to 29 associations. So far, I've met 42 associations. And they're responding in different areas of health, of education, community, environment. So we're really well scattered in terms of how we take care of our Barbadian community. So I was very pleased to see that we are trying to keep together as a community, keeping our Barbadian values together and so on. So that's enough about me. You are here for a town hall meeting with a very special lady, one that is honored not only in Barbados, but across the region. I'm constantly reminding my colleagues that she is Barbados' Prime Minister first and foremost. First and foremost, because we have others who are saying, "I wish your Prime Minister was our Prime Minister." And perhaps that's why she did a fantastic job at the level of CARICOM and again, making Barbados' views known and that we continue to punch above our weight on the global stage. So the Prime Minister will be joining us shortly to engage any questions you may have, to have that discussion with you, to have a meaningful conversation with you. When that time comes and throughout the entire session, I would just ask that as you ask your questions, try to keep them as succinct as possible because we do have a full room. And let us do so with utmost dignity and respect deserving to that of a government and to a national and global leader. Without further ado, I will introduce the Consul General of New York, Mr. Lorenzo Herewood, who will bring to you his warm welcoming remarks.
Good evening, everyone. Good. I usually say this twice, but I think second time is a bit more energy. Good evening, everyone. Fantastic. I have the privilege of bringing greetings on behalf of the consulate general of Barbados at New York. But let me begin by recognizing, once again, I think it is important recognizing some of the distinguished visitors among us. To the Honorable Carrie Simmons, Senior Minister and Minister of Foreign Affairs in the Ministry of Foreign Trade, Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, also commonly known as my boss. The Honorable Jeremiah Hyacinth, Chair of the CARICOM Consul Corps and Consul General of Barbados, Consul General of St. Lucia at New York. Ambition. Distinguished dignitaries and especially invited guests, representatives of the media, and of course, all friends and well-wishers joining us this afternoon. We have a colorful room of persons today. And I don't mean colorful only in terms of your attire, but also colorful in terms of the vast representation of the different backgrounds and current occupations that you have. I know we have a representation of students closer to the front and some students to the back as well. And we have all of the 11 parishes of Barbados represented. I must also say that if we have all 30 constituency represented, then we have the 31st constituency, as you commonly refer to yourselves as, the jurisdiction up here in New York as well. It is interesting that both Deputy Consul General, Dr. Jaganoth and I came up in the coldest month, February. She came February this year, I came February 2024. I do not think it was by, I don't think it was on purpose that we were received here in February in this very warm, warm weather. But I do know that similar to her reflection, the consulate is a place of firsts. As you acknowledged just now, we have the first female Deputy Consul General, one thing, serious. And as Kathy would say, she's Springer and we are not here to, we're not here to get into discussions about schools. All schools are equal, but, all schools are equal, but every school that was built started at a foundation. All schools are equal. When I came to the, when I came to the consulate in 2024, I also recognized that there are a number of things, a number of gaps that we needed to fill. We needed not only to quantify you as a diaspora, but we needed to qualify you. We need to find out where the doctors are. We need to find out where the medical staff or the people in education, where they all are. And for the first time, perhaps in the most recent history of the consulate, we've included data to the extent that now we can tell you quite confidently that the highest category of persons coming through the office are registered, or retired, sorry. The second are persons in the health and medical sector. The third are persons in the education or research section. I can tell you that 64% of the persons we engage are female in terms of seeking our services. I can tell you that the largest, the most frequent service that we provide is the renewal of passports, followed by the application for citizenship by persons under the age of 40. These are the things that the consulate of Barbados that we are pressing ahead with in terms of ensuring that we can not only quantify, but qualify you as a diaspora and utilize you as you can utilize us so that we can work together. The Prime Minister has a saying that many hands make. I didn't hear you, many hands make? And as such, today's forum is a participatory forum, allowing us to allow those many hands to make light work. Because government is really a feedback mechanism as well. And this is part of that feedback mechanism process that started, as you would know, in terms of the Paris peaks. A first in the history of our country in terms of how intense, dynamic, and participatory it is to get feedback from you. Government does not exist in a vacuum. And this forum today represents an opportunity for all of you to hear and to be heard, to listen and to say some of the things that you want to say respectfully, that you want represented. And I know that we have a number of scribes that will take your information and we will take them to the best light and best representation to reprogram and continuously program what we're doing. So with those few words, I want to thank all of you for coming out today. I know I've met a number of you for the first time and those who I have not met, please, I want to meet everybody before I leave here. Everyone. And similar to what the Deputy Consul General said, we have a very special, special lady who will be attending to you guys in short order. I must say that she made a comment about the Prime Minister not, Prime Minister perhaps wanting to be procured by other countries in that capacity. And I would admit that when we were leaving just last week to go to JFK, it was a gentleman of African descent and he looked at her and he said, "Isn't that the Prime Minister of the Caribbean?" I am a diplomat, so I would not say anything to compromise my position on my Prime Minister, but I look back and he said, "Yes." With those few words, thank you very much for coming out. I'm looking forward to a very dynamic exchange between the Prime Minister, between our Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Affairs, Senior Minister Simmons, and you, of course. This is a forum that is for you. Please embrace it because these opportunities all come every day. Embrace it and make the maximum of these opportunities and feel free to engage me as well as the other panelists after the program. So thank you.
Thank you, Consul General, for your welcoming remarks and for putting us in the right mood to relax and to get our questions and our concerns shared to the panel. It is my pleasure at this point to introduce the Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, Senior Minister Carrie Simmons, to speak to you on a number of areas that are of importance to the Barbadian community. So without further ado, Senior Minister Simmons, welcome to the podium.
Hello. Pleasant good evening to all of you. Let me just establish the protocol appropriately and I want to recognize, begin by recognizing you, Judge Raddick. And welcome. Thank you for making it, making the time and making it possible to be here. I want to recognize the Consuls General of CARICOM who have graced us with their presence. And obviously, Mr. Jeremiah, is it Hyacinth? Yes, who I gather is Chair of the CARICOM Caucus. I want to welcome you to Barbados, sir. The representatives of my embassy in Washington DC, thank you for coming over and lending us your support. And of course, we have to recognize the President and Vice President of Medgar Evers College because without their facilitation and their blessing, we would not be able to use this very illustrious institution this evening. Now, ladies and gentlemen, this is perhaps is an address with a little bit of a difference because usually, I think it has been the history and the pattern that we come here and we talk to you about home. I have come here to talk to you about you up here. And I think I have to do that because this is a very interesting time that we live in. But before, we will get there, we will get there. Before we go there, I also had made a note and I want to tell you that the attendance level, capacity-wise, in this auditorium, and then I think there are two overflow rooms should take us to somewhere in the vicinity of 550, 600 people. But there are still people outside and we have filled this room and the two overflow rooms. So I want you to begin by giving yourselves a round of applause. Now, this, this college where we are is a very important one. It's very significant. And I'm glad that we're here at this time in 2025 because it would have been exactly 100 years ago that Brother Medgar Evers had been born. He did not have the opportunity to live a long life. By the age of 37, his life had been very cruelly taken from him. And that perhaps is a story that has been told repeatedly for those people who were part of the civil rights movement in this country. Many of them lost their lives in very cruel circumstances. But by age 37, he was a leading voice in the fight against oppression and suppression and repression and the effort to end segregation, the separation of people who look like virtually all of us in this room from those people who are of a different race. Now, I begin there because I think we're going to have to be very candid in our conversation. The attitudes, the ideology that he would have fought against, that he would ultimately have given his life in fighting against, are beginning to raise their heads. And the battles that he fought and those along with him fought, the battles that we thought we had laid to rest in 65 and 66 are battles which are being waged again. Not only in this country, but frankly speaking, across the North Atlantic. Now, we recognized in Barbados a little while ago that this was a trend that was coming. And one of the beauties, I think, of the capacity of our Prime Minister is that she's constantly looking to try to read what the future is going to be. None of us can read the future, but I think you can pick sense from certain things that you see coming. Agree? And so we, we felt clearly that there were two things we needed to do or there was one thing we needed to do, but for two reasons. Let me put it that way. First of all, we had to make sure that we were able, at long last, to designate somebody. Barbados is a small country. We ain't got a lot of money. We ain't got a lot of natural resources. But we have a lot of ability and our people are our richest resource. And we felt it necessary to start to dedicate now human beings for this explicit task of working with the diasporic community in some of the large cities of the United States of America. And we have found the resources to put two in place. This lovely young lady that you see here, Dr. Jaganoth, is New York City's representative in that capacity as Deputy Consul General. Her remit is you. Her remit is your well-being. Her remit is to ensure that your interests are protected. And equally, therefore, when she answers to me, she answers to me in the context of how well she's looking after you. And then it enables us to have the Consul General freed up a little bit to focus on the other important side of our, our interests, which is the economic activity and the commercial diplomacy that has to be done. So that some things like getting our products onto supermarket shelves across every district of New York and in every borough of New York City. Sorry, every borough of New York, not York City. Every borough of New York can be achieved. And you all know the products that we have. I ain't gonna tell you. You know the products very well. And I can tell you off the cuff that there are some challenges that some of our major producers have, you know? And I'm not here to advertise anybody's product, but I can say to you that as they talk to me as Minister of Foreign Trade, I realize that we do need to do even more to try to facilitate Barbadian businesses as they try to penetrate and function competitively in this United States market. Now, we haven't only done it here. We've done the same thing in Miami. So there's a gentleman in Miami who is now the Consul General, Deputy Consul General down there, Mr. Dalton Tyrone Lovell. And he is working with Consul General Rudy Grant in the same Division of Labor. His focus, his remit is on the states of the South, many of them, not all, and the diasporic relationship, those people who live in the South of the United States. And equally, therefore, Brother Rudy is freed up to do a lot more of the commercial side of the relationship building between ourselves and the Chambers of Commerce, et cetera, in the United States. And then sitting on top of that structure, of course, is the Ambassador and the staff from the embassy in Washington DC. And you all will need to tell me whether you're satisfied. You're seeing and hearing enough of these people because we now have to get to the part where we're doing the work that perhaps has never had to be done before. Now, it has not escaped me, and it certainly did not escape the Prime Minister, that that which I just pointed out to you that we have done is just but the first step. And that the second thing that we had to be able to do was to defend your interests a lot more aggressively and a lot more decisively. Now, I want to start by saying, folks, there has been for a long time of you, by those of you here and those who are part of our Barbadian diaspora in Canada and part of our diaspora in the United Kingdom and part of our diaspora in every part of the world. "Ma, where the one o', why doing out here? What up in me business for? There's no, no, looking out to find a way to get money on me pocket." "I tired with these politicians," et cetera, et cetera. That is not, that is not the hour. This is not the hour. That is not the cause. We know got to be very real. Barbados cannot look after you and your interests the way we want to unless we know who you are, where you are, what you're doing, how we can find you, and better yet, how you can find us. And I'm going to talk you through the concerns that we have because I want to make sure that you are very clear on this matter. Now, many of you have been here for many years. I had an opportunity to speak to the folks in Southern California. And let me say that we are going to have to go west and do a similar thing on the western seaboard of the United States. You have to have Consul General and Deputy in place. But it takes time to do these things because it doesn't happen just like that and the money gonna come. But the reality is that when I had that conversation last year, we also made it very clear then, and I said to them the same thing I'm saying to you. I know that many of you came out here years ago. And I know that many of you didn't just come here, but that you have worked your backsides off from four-day morning, in some cases, to past midnight. And then you get up again four-day morning and do it all over again. And that that has happened year after painful year up here as you build out this country and build this, help build this country's economy. But the reality is that we are now hearing that you are being told that you're not so welcome anymore. And we hear that you're being told that you feel unwanted. And we even hear that though you help build the economy and help contribute to the society, that there is a group of you who constitute a poison to the society that you helped build. That's what we stopped down in Barbados and here. And I feel, I feel as your Foreign Minister that there is a need for us to put ourselves in a position to make sure that you don't get unfair up here. Now, I say this very seriously. We have to have a straight talk conversation. If any of you took the time out today and I see some of the ladies look freshly made up and thing here done and nails and so on. And I know if y'all had time to look at TV. But if you had looked at TV, you would have seen that in Chicago, there is mayhem on the street. People running for cover, tear gas, soldiers pelting people on the ground. There's a picture of a soldier twice as white as me throwing a woman on the ground and on and on and on it goes. And you would have seen in recent times, similar type of thing in California. And I want to say to you that if, again, you're following the current affairs in this country, and I hope and pray that you are, that you know that it has been made abundantly clear that New York's turn is coming soon. And equally, the folks in Washington DC will tell you that they've had to go through their own experience and the experiences you can predict will continue and continue and continue. Now, we have to be real. There is, there is a need for us to recognize that the federal government has signaled its intention to intensify what the, some of them call "drag nets" across the several cities of the United States. And as I said to you today, Chicago is having its moment in time right now as I speak to you. Now, Barbadians are known to be very good, God-fearing, Christian, hard-working people. I equally know, however, that there are one or two Barbadians who ain't met themselves right. And I equally know that if you don't have the document in your hand, then you can have a little problem. So I have been having some conversations. Now, I want you to know the people that we're talking about. The number two in the mission of the embassy and the United, Embassy of Barbados. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the Prime Minister. So I was saying to you, I wanted you to know the people who we are lining up to be of assistance to you. You won't get a chance to meet everybody tonight, but some. In the front row there, I want you to stand up, Christabel Reese. Christabel is out of Washington DC and effectively is our number two in the embassy in Washington DC. And William next to her is equally able and also out of Washington DC. And William, you might not be, oh, you get it? Okay, good. I thought that that, that seat was a little tiny for you. But that's my friend. I could do that. But we are, we, 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 let me say, we have begun a process of asking our embassies, our embassy and all of the missions to begin to train and familiarize our staff with some of the issues because traditionally, a foreign service officer never had these kind of things to worry about. This is now a new era and they have to be attuned and able to adapt to some of these challenges that are coming our way. I want to say to you that even if you are documented, even if you are documented, please try to understand that that does not mean in and of itself that you will not be targeted. And I give you a very clear example. As I speak to you, there's a lady who is 58 years old. She's sitting in a detention center, I believe in, in, is it Chicago, one of those, one of the states. And she is a woman from Ireland, a grandmother, married to an American citizen. Interestingly, she's a blond-haired, blue-eyed grandmother. But she has been picked up by the ICE or Customs Border Enforcement. And her offense apparently is that in 2015, she bonks a check for $25. And so therefore, it has been held against her and they say that she is guilty of a crime of moral turpitude. Their words, not mine, moral turpitude, $25. And so she finds herself in those circumstances, holding a green card. So let me say to you that when I, when we come with this type of outreach, we are candidly and seriously saying, nobody who is an immigrant is beyond the pale. and seriously saying, nobody who is an immigrant is beyond the pale. And so therefore, when once you hear that the Deputy Consul General or the Consul General are trying to reach out so that we can get information, it is not to be busybodies and meddling in your private business, it is to put capital at Bridgetown in a position where we are better able to lend assistance in the event that that should happen. As I indicated before, it is a challenging time. And again, I don't want people to feel that this is just simply a matter of looking down your nose and saying, well, I am a professional, it can't happen to me. Because only last night, the President of this country issued yet another executive order, and that executive order is saying that if you're going to get a renew, renew your visa, I think they call it the HB1 visa, for the professionals, the big boys, the accountants and the managers and the engineers and so on, that that visa comes at a cost of $100,000. So there's a certain messaging which is coming your way, and I hope you're understanding the messaging that is coming your way. And that from our perspective, we feel that there is a duty for us as the government of Barbados, and certainly I feel as the Foreign Minister, that there is a duty for me to be able to talk to you in this way, because, as I said, we want to be in a position to lend assistance in the event that the requirement exists. So that missions have been, when I say missions, I talk about the representatives of the government here in New York, and in Washington DC, in Miami and so on. We have been working with the Coalition for Humane Immigration, we've been working with the American Civil Liberties Union, we have, I think in New York, they have had meetings extensively with the mayoral office, the mayor's office, so that officers can become a lot more educated on the question of rights that could be impacted, and the framework of regulations and procedures that ought properly to be followed if it is that these type of arrests and so on are taking place. Now, again, we can't stop them from happening, but our duty has to be to try to help you if it happens. And there are some issues. I mean, and we want therefore to be able to talk to you, that's why we need to know who you are and who your friends are, need to come and talk to us and so on. Because people get pick up and they're now pursuant to certain administration orders, you may not be able to get bail in certain types of situations. There's a certain automatic nature of detention if it is that you are arrested in certain circumstances. And equally, when families are separated, that is a big deal, because when you take parents from children, it then has implications for the household, it got implications for the child education, it got implication for a whole range of other social housing, et cetera, et cetera. And, and those are the things that are worrying us, the availability of legal aid for minors. These are the things that Foreign Service Officers are now forced to educate themselves on, because these are the burning consular issues that are going to be impacting, not, I hope none of you in here, but frankly speaking, let us be real, it is bound to come to New York as it is now being felt in other parts of this country. So I can say to you this evening that the progress we've made is that the Civil Liberties Union, American Civil Liberties Union, has indicated that they will be willing to work with us at short notice. Of course, they can work with us unless you work with us so that we know that there's a challenge. And equally, the mayoral, I think the example of New York, where you sit with the mayoral office and you get a framework in place so that not only the staff at our embassy are in the know, but equally, they can put you in the know. And so I would want to think that as we go forward, we can have some more meetings of this nature, which are basically about educating you and helping you to be on a more firm foundation. And I use that word advisedly because it was used earlier, and I don't, I don't want to get into that secondary school thing. Now, I feel that there is an old saying in Barbados that a crisis is a terrible thing to waste. And that causes me now to come to the larger threat. Because let us face facts, there has been a challenge that we have had for many, many years, and I think now is the incentive for us to fix it. And the threat really is nothing to do with the nuclear submarine or the destroyers which are 3,500 miles off the coast of Barbados. The threat really is about our failure as a Barbadian grouping and our failure as Barbadian government to be able to properly sit down and build a relationship with you that enables us to help empower you up here and wherever else you happen to be across the diaspora, and also to put you in a position where you can help contribute better to the development of Barbados. And I think that is critical. If I had to give an example, just a simple example, if I go to Texas, I'm going to be told, the minister, if I went to Texas and I was told, Minister, we want to help, but sending things home, for example, sending back something to the Queen Elizabeth Hospital is the hardest thing in the world. That's been your experience? And equally, I know that that is the experience in several other, of several other Barbadian communities. Now, it has now, again, I tell you, the PM is constantly asking us to look at what we do, dismantle it and do it, and do it over, make it better, reconstruct and, sorry, deconstruct and reconstruct, that is what she continues to say. And it would only have been a few days ago in the Cabinet that this matter was discussed. And I think I can now safely say that we are under very clear instruction that there has to be a facilitating unit that is aimed at enabling you to make charitable contributions to Barbados in a seamless way, under one roof, so that those things that you need to, those steps that you need to take are aligned, and that you know the steps you need to take, and that you can know it, the only way you can know it is if we make you all aware digitally so we can reach all of you. Another very important reason why we need to know you, you need to know us, you need to know how to reach us, we need to know how to reach you, you understand? So this is also about that. And I also feel that, as other countries have done, but they didn't do it as a result of a crisis at their doorstep, we need now to have a serious diaspora policy. And I have spoken to my ministry, they are now working on one, and that diaspora policy is going to be built on two fundamental things. One, how we protect the interests of people in our diaspora, whether they live in America, England, Canada, wherever else. And secondly, how we deepen the relationship, the cultural relationship, and the natural affinity that generation after generation of Barbadians have with the land of their forefathers. And I see some young people here in the second row, young Barbadians, I presume, who would have left Barbados and come up here. Now, I'm not going to go into that further, because I believe there's a special, a very special piece of information that the Prime Minister would want to share with you. But the reality is, we have to be able to reach out to you and make you part of what we are doing at home, and give you an opportunity, irrespective of if you've been up here for 20 years, or your child has born up here, or whatever, that you and your family can all feel directly connected to Barbados, not only for the purpose of charitable contribution, but frankly speaking, so that you can too feel that you can make direct investment into the country, set up business, do whatever you may wish to do as a Barbadian living abroad, in the same way that those of us at home are able to do it. Now, that diaspora policy, as I said, is in draft, well, not fully finished, because it still has some tweaks to be done, but I believe that between now and the end of the year, we should be able then to make it available for people to comment on. And most importantly, as I keep saying, she who matters most in this process has to sign off on it. But then, once we get there, it puts us in a position, comrades and friends, it puts us in a position to have the type of relationship at long last with you folks that we have needed to have for several years. Now, I know you didn't come here to hear me, you came here to hear somebody else. And I have the privilege of saying to you that we, we in the Cabinet have a very special way of looking at your principal speaker this evening. We quietly and behind her back say that she is the person who is responsible for the return of stability to Barbados's economy. We, we, we say to each other that it is also because of her that we are living through an age of fundamental transformation in Barbados, and that that transformation is about making the country better than it has ever been before. It is by no means perfect, and the course that has to be run still has to be completed. But I think you can look at Barbados from a distance, or you can visit Barbados, and you feel immediately, sense immediately, the change and the progress that is being, that is taking place. We also say, as I think you also say, that this lady has brought a certain can-do attitude to this country. And that many times, we were told and we were led to believe that we're too small, and die for us, die for other people. We ain't ready for that, our time will come, but you know, watch other people do it. And that has never been part of her outlook or part of her vocabulary. And equally, we feel that it is because of this visionary leadership that we are in a position to be a tiny island that is not just punching above its weight now, but is now leading the world in terms of thought and leadership, as to how human beings can coexist constructively and peacefully with a developmental agenda, how we can share a planet in common and protect that planet and the environment in all of the countries on planet Earth, and how we can do it with a sense of financial justice and financial fairness. And those are conversations that never came out of a little, of a little small island, developing state anywhere in the world. I am proud that it has come out of Barbados, and I'm proud to give to you the Prime Minister of Barbados, who has been at the forefront of this battle. Thank you.
I'm not going to, please sit, please sit. First of all, good afternoon. And it feels so good to be in New York and to see a room full of Bajorans as big as this room. It feels even better, given the fact that you really didn't have as long a notice period as I would normally like, but I felt the need to reconnect and to bond with you, and hence my being here. And that is perhaps why this evening will be a little different. Kerry and Lorenzo have both done their job and prepared the wicket. But I have determined that if I am to be fair to you, I need to do less open talking and more responding, because at the end of the day, I am really here to hear you, and I'm here to share as well, but I can share and say everything that I want to say, I am sure, with the range of questions that I'm likely, or the range of balls that I'm likely to have to face, both on the offside and the leg side, and some full-on to the wicket. And some I will play inside the crease, and some I will bat outside and go for a six. But I will try to follow more often than not the Everton Week's perspective. If you don't hit the ball in the air, you can't get caught. So let us hit some singles, some twos, some threes, and some fours, we'll be good with that. So what I will say to you is that this country of ours is becoming a senior citizen, and like I am as well. And that from the 1st of December this year, we will start the celebration of our 60th anniversary. And the 1st of December to November 30th is the road to 60. I keep reminding people, you don't count after the year you celebrate. When you finish your first year of birth, you're into your second year. When we finish your 59th year on November 30th, we are into our 60th year. I also want to thank the people of the Bajorans in New York, because you were the ones that inspired we gathering. And if you recall, it was first announced here in September 2018, and it was supposed to be 2020. And like with most things we face as a people in life, it doesn't always come easy. And we did January, and we did February, we did St. Lucy, and we did St. Peter, and as we get into St. Thomas, bam, COVID take over, and that was the end of that. But like the Bajorans who went before, we were not prepared to surrender, or as our new president-elect will say, no surrender, no retreat. And what we did then was that we said 2025. And we are in the midst of 2025, this is the month, Kerry, your month, St. James', and we have still the large numbers of Christchurch and St. Michael to come in October and November. But, well, my brother St. John had his time in May, but I will give you an opportunity again, because while we will not have the next we gathering until 2030, we will have the road to 60 from the 1st of December to the 30th of November. And for those of you who therefore want to do your own thing, you can still remember that January is in Lucy, February is in Peter, March is in Thomas, you can come right down, April is in Joseph, May is in John, June is in George, July is in Philip, August is in Andrew, September is in James, October is Christchurch. I refuse to believe that Christchurch's got more people than November St. Michael. And, and, and as fate would have it, the last day of November is the bridge for all the parishes, because it is the day upon which we celebrate our independence and our republic, being the youngest republic in the world as we speak today. So, you know, we have a way of looking for bargains, so you now get two for the price of one. But I will then give the people of St. Michael the final victory until Spitestone comes in a little later, because 2028, 2027 is 400 years of modern settlement, and 2028 is 400 years for the capital city of Bridgetown. So that I have given you enough to plan out, and as we speak today, we will address some of the issues. Our country continues to do reasonably well, there are challenges. Kerry spoke to you about the challenges, I'll speak to you about them as we have our questions, I'm sure. Suffice it to say that the mantra has to be about continuing to do the big things for transformation while focusing daily on the small things that make a difference, because it is the small things when mushroomed can become the big challenges that prevent you from moving. You know what they say, you have every problem in the world until you have a health problem. It's the small problems that cause the irritants, it's the small problems that cause the blood pressure to go up and the frustration to come. And it's the small problems more often than not that are resolved not by money, not by legislation, not by any of those things alone, but by the combined effort of that with the mental changes and the mental acceptance and the personal behavior that comes as a result of those mental changes. So let's get the ball rolling, I look forward, I'll sit down and take the questions for the rest of the evening, thank you. Now, there's a saying that Bajorans don't like to start the ball rolling, but I refuse to believe it, because Barbados has produced the two greatest opening batsmen in the world, Gordon Greenwich and Desmond Haines, and we have also produced some of the greatest fast bowlers who can open an innings if required. So who's gonna come? Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Two, two, two rules. One, just give us your name and which part you're from. And if you have a special interest or a special passion or your profession, just tell us. And secondly, on personal issues, I'm going to ask those who have, I do not believe either in our town hall meetings at home that anybody should have to allow their personal issues to be known by the public or the world. And to that extent, I'm going to ask Jessica and Ashanta, both of them, to ensure that at the back of the room, we can have some kind of space. And Lisa, that people who have personal, particular issues that need resolution, that we can take the information. It is for this reason that I have established an Office of Citizen Engagement that is headed at home by Mr. Roy Morris, because I've found that in the Prime Minister's office, you are continuously responding to unpacking and deconstructing issues at a personal level for people. So it is a function that needed to be addressed. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Sandra T. Eady, and I love history and genealogy as it relates to Barbados. I have two questions, and I will try to keep this under 90 seconds.
That's fine.
Good afternoon, Madam Prime Minister. Thank you for meeting with us. And also thank you for recognizing my work with the Diaspora and sharing history and genealogy this past year with the Pride of Barbados Award. Appreciate that.
Congratulations again.
Thank you. First, education and inclusion, right? So we are doing education transformation, and I think it's a great thing. We have partnered with Columbia Teachers College for Education Reform. Here in the U.S., reading programs like Lucy Colkins, which a number of our students were exposed to in the last few decades, were later found to be less effective for struggling readers, especially in underserved and under-resourced schools. It is now being replaced with something called advancing literacy. Inclusive education is critical, but research also shows that in high-needs classrooms, large numbers of students requiring support can overwhelm resources. So how will Barbados ensure that the international programs and the inclusive practices are implemented with the necessary supports so that all students, especially the most vulnerable, can succeed in the classroom? So there are two elements there. How do we know that the new programming that's being offered by Columbia Teachers College is going to work? And two, how are we going to integrate inclusion into our reform in a way that's going to make learning possible for everybody in that classroom? So that's my, my, wait, 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 that's not the two questions. Can I, can I add?
Let me do one at a time, because my brain is not as young as it used to be. So let me say that education transformation is at the core of what we have to do as a nation. We've taken a colonial educational system, and we've stretched it out for as long as is possible. But it's not working for us. And down to the disparity between the school tie and all of that foolishness. It's no secret that left up to me, we would not have the Common Entrance. But I accept that I am only a steward for the people of the country and that people want a more gradual approach rather than a more radical approach. The gradual approach, the Minister of Education in a ministerial statement about, what, six weeks ago, would have announced that we are moving to a situation where we will combine the Common Entrance with, in fact, continuous assessment of Class III and Class IV, so that we don't make a judgment on a child's life based on one morning that they may or may not be able to perform. That works for some, but it doesn't work for all. Similarly, we are going to be able to review the allocation to schools and not only let it be based on marks, but marks for some and then geographical proximity for others. Because if not, what we do is have these concentrated demands, all bright kids together, all kids who really need help together, rather than having mixed opportunities, because a rising tide can lift all. With respect to knowing whether Columbia University's training program of teachers, we, we have done two things, and most people don't realize this. I know instinctively, because I served as Minister of Education. And in the year 2001, when I left, we were still, on average, taking about 41, 4200 people per year in the Common Entrance. When we came back to office in 2019, 2018, sorry, it was about 3,03100, somewhere around there. This year, it was 2,895 kids taking the Common Entrance. And by the next few years, based on the fact that in Class I and infants A and B, the numbers in there now are 2,200. So it means that between 2,000 and year 2,000 roughly and now, Barbados has halved the number of kids being born in the country. And when I tell you that the country has aging and declining population, Kerry is giving me the actual numbers. In terms of births, in 2022, we had 2,156. And in 2024, last year, only 1,995 kids were born in Barbados. In terms of deaths last year, we had 3,088. Matt Fingall has a way of telling you that in his part of the country, up Blades Hill and St. Catherine's and out that side, that he monitored for a year, and they had about 67,000 cunerals and only three births.
Oh, wow.
So that, that is just an analogy to tell you the problem that we face. We have not reduced the teaching complement in Barbados, neither government. So we now have an amazingly low teacher-people ratio that has emerged. And there are schools like Ignatius Bay in St. Lucy that now have 67,000 students. I opened that as one of the new primary schools in 1995, I believe, when I was a young Minister of Education. And 30 years later, it's gone from a couple hundred, five, 600 to about 50 something. I say that to say that we have to focus on the retraining of our teachers. And the governments, successive governments have not said, send home teachers because the, the, the student role is declining. We've kept faith. But we now have to hone the skills of individual teachers to solve particular problems. You raised the issue of literacy. The Minister of Education has made it clear that our government wants to ensure that we can get people to just basically read across the board. Those who've fallen through the cracks, whether because of COVID, and make no mistake about it, COVID was deadly. COVID was deadly for those kids who could not have face-to-face instruction for more than two years, two and a half years. And we've set ourselves the target of both at primary, the current crop coming up, but those who have passed the age of basic reading and those who are in secondary, let us pull you out and let us make sure we can correct your ability to read between now and December 2026. At the same time, let us integrate a literacy program, both for adult education, but also from the basics, from pre-primary into primary, and allow the teachers to specialize in areas, given the fact that we now have a surplus of teachers. We want to have universal pre-primary education rather than just for a few. We have the space now, because of the decline in population rule, to be able to make that a reality in a short period of time, and we're working towards that. So can I guarantee that it will work? No, we can't. So what do we do? We have to monitor and fix. We have to test, measure, and fix. And we give the country the assurance, particularly me, because I'm getting a little old, and I certainly would like to see those major changes in education. And what's the other fundamental point? You see this here? This can give whatever information you want, good, bad, faults. You have to be able to be discerning.
That's right.
And what, therefore, is the objective of education today? We need to be able to make sure that we nurture values and attitudes first and foremost. Because education is not simply an academic exercise. It's a developmental exercise for our children. We need to make sure that we provide them with the requisite skills. And the skills, yes, of literacy and numeracy, but the skills of critical thought and discernment. Because more than ever, you have to be able to make a judgment about what is real, what, what is clearly, patently requiring further research, because this really looked like fake news and truth, and don't be a victim of it.
That's right.
And we have to cultivate a culture towards excellence and compassion. And if we do all of that, while remembering, as I said, education is not about academics alone, it's about development, and it's about social and emotional learning targets. And that's exactly where we're trying to go. I'm gonna tell you a little later in the evening, because I realize it's early, about the debt for social resilience swap that we're working on next. Because this country of ours, since independence, in fact, before independence, because really and truly, from the days when our people started to vote for our people, from Grant Lee Adams as the father of democracy, right through to Errol Barrow as the father of independence, we had a commitment to putting people first. You hear me say in my speeches internationally, seeing people, hearing people, feeling people? That's because who we are. You want to know the genius of Rihanna? Rihanna went and decided she was opening a makeup store. And she determined that unlike the other established makeup companies, she was doing it for all shades. Whatever shade you are in the world, come, I got makeup for you. And when she finished that, she then said, I'm opening up a lingerie company. And whatever shape you are, even if you're a man, you're disabled, whatever it is, I got lingerie for you, because you deserve to look in the mirror and feel pretty. I maintain that that sense of inclusive, inclusivity and inclusion is a fundamental Bajan attribute. Because the one thing our people quick to tell you is when somebody getting what? Unfair. Because we have a strong sense of social justice and inclusion. And that strong sense in her, where's Victoria's Secret? Where's Elizabeth Arden? Where's Lancome? All of the arbiters before of what was good business in those areas have been turned on the head because of that Bajan sense of inclusion that she has reflected in her business model. That is what, she's our national hero. She didn't start it. She reflected it. That is who we are. And I'm hoping that in our educational system, that is what we will do. It does not make sense that 40% of our population are educated to the max, and the others are left to swim if they can, run if they can, walk if they can. And this government's commitment is, I said from 1995, each one matters. It is still our commitment. You must have a firm education platform, because that is the difference between poverty and marginalization and vulnerability and success.
Thank you. Identity, identity and education. I think when we come to the States and we go to schools here, the thing that makes us succeed is that we have an identity that was forged in a country where we knew who we were and valued who we were. My last thing is personal. You see this colored egg, huh? What, what parish this is? Roads and bridges in St. Joseph. I grew up below the Melvin Hill Bridge. A land that my ancestor purchased in 1858.
You want no one again fix. It is a priority. And since there are so many speakers after you, I can tell you straight, look.
But wait, your, your ancestor grew up at the road on Tamarin Cove, the Nichols and the Tappens. Mr. Tapper, you still live at the road from the Melvin Hill Bridge? And so, and so we-
I gotta put you to talk to my mother.
And, and so this issue of soil erosion has followed our families. The question is, when sugarcane was king, we had to keep the bridges working and the roads working because the cane had to get to the factory. In a tourism world, what does that mean in terms of our roads and bridges?
It's not even that. Look, we have regrettably not done well at maintenance in Barbados. And this is across the board. So don't let's fool ourselves. And that's why I say, as we do the big things, keep your eye focused on the small things. You understand? And that's why I talk about whether it's citizenship, you don't have a house, or you don't maintain it, the house can eventually do a fall down upon you. The, the, if you don't open the windows and get ventilation, the tiles can blow from the heat. You know the drill. It's no different. And regrettably, what we found when we came into office, which led us to do the deal with the Chinese with the Scotland District loan that we have with them, is that the majority of bridges in Barbados have not been maintained for 40, 50 years. Now, are you talking about when I was a child? You understand? So that there's a lot of catch-up, and there's a lot being done. And we've had to ask people to be patient with us. We're doing it. Part of the difficulty, let me take St. Thomas. If you try to shut off every road coming to town, how many people can come to town? So we're doing Bridgefield now, but Shop Hill is bad, bad, badly in need of being done. But we have to make sure that we get a certain way with some of the routes before we open other routes, even if we had the capacity to go in there at the same time. In particular, with the Melvins Hill Bridge, that has seriously inconvenienced others. And we know it is a priority, and it has therefore been pulled to be put at the top of the list. The Attorney General, Dale Marshall, has been very vocal in, in, in asking for it, and we will proceed in that way. But we are fighting not just erosion and climate. We are fighting decades of non-maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you. So come this side, we can go left and right, left and right, left and right. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. It is such, my name is Beulah Wilson. I hail from St. James. And it's such a pleasure to be able to speak to you again.
Welcome, my dear.
I finally applied for returning national, and I was successful. There was just one problem. I called Barbados. They answered the phone, and they took care of it. And I want to let you people know, when I go home, these people in immigration, they welcome me.
Thank you.
I, I was here for 54 years, and they treat me like if I'm just-
You don't tell nobody that, because they ain't gonna believe you.
I'm 78, so I, yeah, but what I want to say, you got a new skill that you don't know. You know the Bajorans say, the girl, a basket, the girl water, you carry it. The job that you're doing, and I said before, and I will say it again, I wish you could stay Prime Minister forever.
Thank, thank you, my dear, but I want to tell you, I just met, that's why I have this book here. And I want a number of you to buy it when it comes out. It comes out in 10 days' time. And it's by Tom Freedon, who I think was head of your CDC in this country, Center for Disease Control. And it's called "The Formula for How to Save Millions of Lives, Including Your Own: The Formula for Better Health." And in the mission, the Ambassador Francois has put up, you want to see the book again? No problem. He, he asked me to promote it, but I didn't know I was gonna get such a chance so quickly. All jokes aside, no, 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 but there was a picture, a set of pictures on the wall that Francois has put up in the conference room of the Prime Ministers of Barbados addressing the UN, engaging with the UN. And I showed Mr. Freedon the wall, and I showed him Errol Barrow, he died in office. And I showed him Tom Adams, he died in office. And I showed him David Thompson, he died in office. And I, he looked at me, and he said, and you're number eight? And he says, you have to live to make sure it's not a one-in-two mortality. And I told him I am ever-present of that reality, that I joined and I came into a job that has one of the worst risk profiles in Barbados. So you may want me to stay forever, but you may have to pray for my health first before any of that. So thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Prime Minister Mia Motley. My name is Chantelle Francis. I'm a junior biology major, mathematics and health education double minor at Howard University. As a pre-medical student aiming to direct my studies towards the Caribbean, what are some steps that are being taken to alleviate the demand of healthcare concerns in Barbados and making it more accessible for citizens throughout different parishes?
Good question, but I'm going to give you a full answer too. So anybody else who has healthcare issues, I can give you all a run-through and a synopsis. Look, when we came to office, we made it clear that there were two forgotten areas of development in modern Barbados. One was health, and one was agriculture. Health became even more complex once COVID came in. But the truth is that because Barbados has a better public health foundation than most countries globally, we were able to do better than most globally in spite of the density of our population. By the same token, I've been arguing and saying, we have an epidemic with diabetes and hypertension. We have an epidemic with obesity. And it is a very personal issue for me. I've been able to withstand bad health profiles, but I need to get weight off. And the truth is that I've now come to understand that my enemy is lack of sleep more than anything else. But that has been a long personal journey for me to find out that. And that the less I sleep, the worse I feel, the less I regenerate, the less I cure, and I don't lose weight when I don't sleep, full stop. When I sleep, different story, and when I drink water and I exercise, everything changes. And the message has to be about personal responsibility. From five o'clock this morning, he's been pouring water for me. Thank you. But we have given the Queen Elizabeth Hospital and the polyclinics more money than they even asked for initially. We have, in the last two years after coming out of COVID, because COVID sucked up a significant sum of money in healthcare, because we were then having to face with Harrison's point, plus all of the other COVID-related expenditure. So that caused a spike in health expenditure in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and remnants of it in twenty-three. But we settled late last year, early this year, a funding plan for a hundred and thirty million dollars in new hospital equipment, some of which has already been delivered, some of which is being delivered because of the procurement cycle. And a hundred and thirty million was just under one percent of GDP, so it's not an insignificant number. And then on top of that, we agreed to another set of a couple hundred post jobs to the tune of thirteen million dollars in additional expenditure for the jobs. As much as we have done, and we've done other studies looking at the process and the deconstruction and the reconstruction has started, we also went in and did a pricing study on every element within the hospital itself, recognizing that we still have problems with the systems. Because when you say deconstruct and reconstruct, people don't necessarily listen to you and they need you to repeat yourself ten times before they start to do it. But we're at that stage now. But what I realize even more is some basic things. And the basic things are not for government alone, but it is for everyone. It is lack of communication between people who work in different departments. They just don't talk with one another sufficiently. And the systems don't admit of the flows of communication. And then lack of accountability. Because if, he ain't doing his job and nobody ain't telling nothing, so I ain't gonna do mine neither. That kind of contagion. And that's why last Sunday in a branch meeting in St. George, I said, look, and it's not the healthcare alone, it's not the public sector alone, it's the entire country. People need to do their job. Simple. Not asking for no more nor no less. If you go beyond the call of duty, great, but people need to do their job. Because that is the foundation of responsibility. I told you that I would speak to you about the debt for social resilience swap. We did two debt swaps, you would have heard. We've won a lot of awards for innovation globally and hemispherically on it. One was, we bought back some of our debt and we used the debt, the interest, the savings and interest over fifteen years. The debt for nature swap, with the help of the Inter-American Development Bank and Nature Conservancy, is to go to help protect the oceans in Barbados. Marine Sustainability Trust, we get about fifteen to sixty million US over a fifteen-year period. The second one, we innovated again and we said, no, we're gonna do a debt for climate swap this time. We're gonna buy back a little more of our debt and the savings from that debt will be now used to build a new South Coast sewage treatment plant, because we don't ever want to see sewage on the highways again. But we recognize that instead of sending the sewage in an outfall to the ocean, we want instead to treat the water and allow the treated water to replenish the aquifers and then also to have some of that water piped from Graham Hall to St. Philip to be able to help with agriculture, because as you know, St. Philip is a more arid parish and the access to irrigation is a little more dodgy. The next one, we're doing a regional debt swap for the whole region. And in fact, other countries even outside of the Caribbean, like the Dominican Republic, outside of Caricom, I should say, like the Dominican Republic and like El Salvador and others have also expressed interest in working with us on this massive regional debt swap. And a debt swap simply is saying, I'm already paying the debt, let me buy back some of what I have and with the savings and interest, let me go and spend that money in something that I really, really need without having to pay extra money. So that is like you paying your mortgage and getting two houses instead of the one that you live in. So we have the same debt, but we can get a new South Coast sewage treatment plant without having to incur another cent in debt. Everybody understand? Cool. So the next one now is now breaking total new ground. And I'm talking it through with you because we need to understand this as a people. We, successive governments, we give you free education. We give people access to healthcare, primary healthcare, and even beyond that, you can get a whole host of things. You get free medication for persons under sixteen, over sixty-five, and for certain chronic diseases. We have recreational spaces and sporting spaces. We spend money on social security and other welfare payments to be able to keep families, vulnerable families alive. So whenever done, we are spending a significant sum of money on every Beijing child for the first eighteen years of their life, not true? So when that child eventually in their twenties becomes a victim of either a car accident, substance abuse, violence, type two diabetes, as more and more of them are presenting with, you begin to get an undermining of the investment that you have made, because we make these investments in our people for two reasons. One, because we care. And two, because we want to produce a more productive population to help the country continue to grow from strength to strength. But if every time you putting water in, according to you, a basket? You're putting water in, but the water coming out is like the non-revenue water. It coming out, it coming out, because we have not yet found a way. We have to have, and I keep saying, and I said it in the by-election over and over this year, we have to have a serious conversation, because we're not children anymore, we're a mature nation. And the bottom line is, I can't come in your house and tell you not to eat macaroni and cheese every day or not to go and buy it every day, or to not to go and buy jam puffs and meatloaf, meat roll and all of that every day, or turnovers every day. I can't come in your house and tell you exercise. Am I telling you from outside, but I can't make you do it every day. I can't even come in your house and make you take your children to Sunday school. I can beg you to do it or to the temple. So what is this telling you? That there has to be a partnership. And the partnership is between the highest office in the land and the highest offices in the land. What's the highest office in the land? Anybody? Citizenship. The citizen. It has to be with people accepting responsibility for their own healthcare. People accepting responsibility for doing the thirty minutes four times a week. People accepting responsibility for how they eat. I ain't telling you don't eat ham, I ain't telling you don't eat a pork chop. But by the same token, what? Balance, 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 moderation, moderation, moderation. And part and parcel of what we have to do is to get the balance right so that we are not getting the numbers presented to us. One of the things that Mr. Freedon told me is that their research is showing more and more that one of the most important things to control in a population is blood pressure. And we say control, meaning that, yes, we would love you not to get it, but once you have it, we need to make sure that we are controlling it across the board with the requisite medication and then you with contributing with your eating and exercise. And if we can do that, and if we can also consciously start to look to see how we're going to control diabetes, because diabetes leads to us having high amputations, numbers of amputations. It leads to a large percentage of blindness. And regrettably, more and more, and we're seeing the pressure on our systems, dialysis. You understand? So when you combine this with the fact that Barbados has a declining and aging population, that ECLAC predicts that one in every two Belgians will be over the age of sixty-five by the year twenty fifty, which means that it is unsustainable to be able, think about it. Can you run your household, your business, your anything, if one in every two people are over sixty-five? It's gonna be challenging, at the very least. And that is why we'll talk about the immigration policy later and other things. But we are at a stage now where we have to take control. And this notion, we went through, the government successfully have done reasonably well. I just came from co-chairing this afternoon the Sustainable Development Goals of the United Nations yet again. And we are at a stage where we're looking to see, how can we keep focus on the SDGs with everybody having a different agenda now and not wanting DEI, not wanting climate, not wanting to focus on the social things that matter gender, inclusiveness, not wanting to focus on education or healthcare, not wanting to accept the fundamental truth that you cannot finance healthcare and education with ten and fifteen-year loans, but you need thirty and forty-year loans to give yourself enough time to have the people who benefit from it help you pay back for those very loans for the infrastructure you've put in place. And the point that I made to them is that Barbados has been lucky, because through successive governments, we have always pursued the SDGs, we just didn't call it that. We pursued trying to make sure that we could give education to all. We pursued trying to ensure that we could widen healthcare according to our pockets affordability, but to as many as we can. We pursued also making sure that people don't go sleep hungry at night as far as possible. But we didn't call it SDGs, we call it just development. And we have to continue in that role. But you can't have a government investing successively and governments investing successively into a program and half of what you invest in is falling out because of not knowing how to manage reckless behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, madam.
You see why I didn't give a speech at the beginning? Yes, ma'am?
Madam Prime Minister, my name is Marla Archer. And I am a part of the aging population. My main concern is derelict buildings in Barbados. I am eighty years old and I own a home.
I tell you, I'll stop telling people your ages up in here. But then again, I have to boast, because I have a primary school principal who turned a hundred and seven this week. Dame Alice Carrington, and she looked, she don't look that at all.
Okay, I have a home that I purchased in nineteen ninety in Clermont. Five years after purchasing the home, approximately five years, another building was going up next to mine. And they stopped working on it soon after that. So the building is there now like for, I would say, maybe thirty years. I lost my tenant about two years ago and I have my house on the market to sell. Now, there were lots of people who came by to look at the home and they loved the home, but the problem is that abandoned building. I have, I try to go to Barbados twice a year and I have seen mattresses on the property, on the abandoned property. I've seen marijuana growing there. I've seen rats, rodents. And I really would like to know what I can do to make the process easier for me to sell my home.
Let me deal with it. Look, as I said, these things are an issue. We passed late last year and it was only proclaimed this year and it will become active from the first of November. And I start first with the bush, because there are a lot of people who don't clean up the properties. And in not cleaning up the properties, as you correctly said, rats, mosquitoes, et cetera. And then in some instances, not just public health nuisances, but public security risk as well. People hiding things, people using it for improper means, et cetera. It is intended to be able to say to Belgians who own property, or anybody who owns property in Barbados, I should say, keep it clean. And that if your bush goes above two feet, know that the government has the right now to come in and clean it. Put the bill on your land tax, but more importantly, cause you to pay a fine. And the fine is three hundred dollars plus ten dollars a day for every day that you don't pay. As of the first of November, that is what you will see. The legislative process passed. We had extensive consultations with the Social and Environmental Standing Committee of Parliament. We have been taking our time to sensitize people. If you have a property at home, get somebody to clean it. If you don't keep it clean, it will be eventually cleaned by government and you'll have to pay the fee and the fee attaches to your land tax bill. So that we are urging everybody to do the right thing. It makes sense for you to do it yourself, because you're gonna pay the same amount to clean it, but you're not gonna pay the fine. Derelict buildings, similarly, is something that I have asked the Environmental Health Department to go after. And they presented a program earlier this year for derelict buildings and derelict vehicles, because it's not just buildings. And they have, they indicated that they wanted ten million dollars to clean up these things over a four or five-year period. This is a way to clean up after the first year. How much more you think can come? So that, that makes no sense. We need to clean it up within an eighteen-month period. And we say eighteen months, maybe two years at the outset of the thing, because there is a genuine capacity issue at home now. Construction is booming. There is a serious issue with respect to being able to get the kinds of skills or companies to work as you would like, because there's so much work available. But we have asked them to undertake that program and they've started. And they will continue across the board, because even as I said, on the road to sixty, Belgians need to become house proud again. And one of the things that happened in the last decade and continued into even COVID because of lack of ability to move, is that the kind of maintenance and painting and all of those things that would make Barbadians fully house proud seem to have not been as present as it should be. We also announced earlier this year a levy painted initiative to encourage as many people to paint their houses in the sixtieth year of independence. And we will be rolling out the details of that very shortly through Senior Minister Dugid as to how we will help those who are below the poverty line and those who are above, so that the country can make a clear decision to be able to deal with it. All of these initiatives, ma'am, are intended to remove from derelict buildings to derelict vehicles, to abandon buildings that may not necessarily be derelict yet, to the issue of bush, as I said, which we now know, there have been too many instances of people who have been affected negatively by that. And I can only say that this is necessary for the entire population. This year, we announced, instead of just having Parish Speaks Ideas Forum, because as we say, don't just give me the problem, tell me the solutions, because government is not omnipotent nor omniscient. We don't know everything and we are all-powerful. We listen to people. And a little girl in the St. George Ideas Forum came forward with the commitment that we should really have these national cleanup days across the year. And the government has accepted it. The Ministry of Environment Minister Adrian Ford and his team have said, look, we're gonna do this in September, we're gonna do this in December, we're gonna do this in March, we're gonna do this in June, and it will be weekends. This September, they started with the heavy, the cleaning of the heavy appliances and that kind of thing. But what I've said to them, it is still not top of the mind. I want it when we do the weekend, that everybody in Barbados is aware that. I want it when we do the weekend that everybody in Barbados is aware that this is the weekend to clean up and that it is a national cleanup four times a year across a weekend. So if you're seven days, we know you ain't coming between Friday six o'clock and Saturday six o'clock, but come on the Sunday. You understand? If you are fervent that Sunday is your Sabbath, come and do it from Friday afternoon to Saturday. And what do we do? Well, we do it as a community, and then some people will cook some food and relax and enjoy each other's company after. But there has to be a habit. What cleanliness is next to what?
Carenne.
Okay. Who taught us that? You understand? But we have to live it, not just talk it. So I hope that coming to your specific issue, as I said, please don't give us the specifics here. Share with the others who are setting up the mechanism for us to follow through, and let us see what we can do, putting you with the owner to be able to ensure that you're probably. The other thing is, the corollary of that is, if we keep the neighborhoods clean, if we remove the derelict buildings and vehicles, what happens to the property values? So why would we object to having higher property values in a neighborhood?
Exactly.
And you can't say land tax because this government moved the land tax from a hundred and fifty thousand for no taxes for the first hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand in twenty twenty two. And as of April first next year, it goes to four hundred thousand so that the first four hundred thousand dollars is tax free. And I therefore, we have removed any punitive tax that stands as an obstacle to having Barbados as a property owning democracy across the board at the bottom.
One, one other thing I'd like to say, one other thing I'd like to say, I do pay two, two electric bills per month, although I don't live there, and water bill, insurance, you know, and I can't afford to do it here and there as well. So that's why I really would like something done so I can sell my property.
I understand.
Thank you so much.
And as I said, have the direct personal conversation with the fellow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much, Prime Minister. My name is Jadeet Sukuru. I am an epidemiologist, and I'm curious what's on the horizon for Barbados in terms of innovating data systems, especially with the rise of AI.
Well, this thing is so important, but what you put in is what you get out, not true? And I'm going to share a little, I'm at Medgar Evers College, and I'm going to share a little experience that I had on the twenty third of August at Carrie Fester in a big conversation with Ralph Gonzalez and Sir Hillary Beckles and Secretary General of Carriecom and June Suma. And while we were there, I wanted to check and went on AI to check on what countries had, and I'm giving you this as an example as to why we have to be careful, what countries had used the Barbados Slave Code as a platform for their own management of laws to control slaves. And the question I asked was what other laws in the Americas were inspired by the Barbados Slave Code of sixteen sixty one? And it gave me the answer. But within four seconds, the answer started to dissolve and disappear. And it then said, I'm afraid that I can't talk about that topic. Sorry about that. I then asked the next question, same time, give me the Slave Code of South Carolina because I know that in sixteen seventy, people left Spike Stone and went and settled in the Carolinas. It once again gave me the answer, and within three to four seconds, it disappeared. And it then said to me, I'd really like to help, but it seems that this topic is off limits for me. Sorry about that. Now, I went on perplexity and genora and asked the same question on different AI platforms and got the answer. Now, I give that example to tell you that we are living at a time in the world where AI can promote greater harmony or it can promote greater inequity and disharmony. But the kind of deliberate governance that is needed has to be put in place first and foremost. Governments exist to regulate the public space. Private people try to maximize their involvement and their returns in the private space, but governments is what come in to stop anarchy and to promote fairness across the board. We have a strong history of public health in Barbados. In fact, Barbados has promoted and given the region more public health experts than probably any other country in the last century. Sir George Allen, Sir Kenneth Standard, Sir Kenneth Stewart, and I can go on and on with a number of doctors up to today continuing to play their role in Pahoe and across the board. We have not been as diligent because like many other things, we have allowed a few standards to drop in terms of the collection of data, and the government is trying to change that now. And in fact, we are working assiduously to create, move the Statistics Services Department into an independent entity, the Barbados Statistical Agency and Big Data Analytics because a lot of it comes down to your capacity to analyze big data, as you know. But if we don't also start getting in on managing how data is collected, assimilated, and distributed, we are going to be the victim of other people's perception of ourselves as I just showed you. So we recognize the critical importance of it. The hospital has taken long to be able just even to have a, and the health sector, I should say, a health information system that will be common for both the hospital and the polyclinics. Mercifully, we have this year now crossed that barrier with being able to complete the procurement process. We were working with the Inter-American Development Bank and others, and we look forward to being able to have that so that we can start to collect the data. Because if we don't have the right data populated in the data centers, what are you going to get in your AI models? Garbage. And that's one of the other reasons you hear me talk about sovereignty also of access, whether it is satellites or whether it is distribution mechanisms or whether it is the collection of data. So I'm glad to hear that you're epidemiologist. I think the country needs access to more. I think we need to be able to recognize the value of our own data. And by the same token, having said that, Barbados reports more faithfully on public health data than many other countries globally. So we, we need to assess our situation, perfect it, but control the mechanisms. And persons like yourself would be key to this process going forward. Okay? This CG told me that we may see you more often and that you may be one of the beneficiaries of our changes to the immigration bill that are now, that is now before Parliament. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ayesha Husbands. Thank you for being here, all of you with us. I'm from St. Philip, and I would like to return to Barbados before retirement.
St. Farlow?
St. Farlow, yes. However, a concern of mine is the cost of living. How, how are we going to address the cost of living to encourage young families and skilled professionals to remain and return home? And also, how can Barbados accelerate food production and processing to reduce the dependency on costly imports, which impacts the cost of goods?
I can see there's a five O exam tonight.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, no way. Look, cost of living has been one of the regrettable developments post-COVID, compounded and made worse by the war in Ukraine, compounded and made worse by the climate crisis and the geopolitical tensions in, in, in Gaza. Why? Because the logistics carrying ships through the Panama, they were suffering from a lack of sufficient water in the locks to be able to let the ships go through. And of course, at the same time, you had then problems on the Red Sea and Suez Canal and ships being able to come through there. So you had one, two, three, four, at least four things just coming at you that, just poop, poop, poop. And then, of course, the general geopolitical tensions, which led a couple of years ago to the increase, the sudden increase and spike in the price of oil. Mercifully, the price of oil has come back down and has remained on average to about seventy, hovering between seventy and eighty dollars. What we did when that first happened in twenty twenty two, and I'm glad Carrie's here because he led it ably on behalf of the government as Senior Minister for the Productive Sectors, we determined that we were going to tackle a number of things to help ease the pressure on Bejans with respect to cost of living. We were able to agree that we were not increasing taxes beyond the equivalent of eighty dollars a barrel in oil with respect to that so that we would make sure there was no pass through of taxes. We also freeze the taxes on containers to the CIF levels of December twenty nineteen so that the increase in the cost of containers, containers went from five thousand US dollars per container to about twenty thousand US dollars per container in some instances, and ten and twelve is where it was hovering for the majority of time. We then took a decision to be able to remove or to expand the basket of goods rather that with both food and sanitary items for those items that were still attracting either VAT or import duties. And then this March again, we expanded it for a second time with respect to, with respect to the question of things like stewed beef and saga and a bunch of other fruit and vegetables that were still outside of the basket of goods. We also then took a decision to be, and I can't remember the exact unit of measurement, but at the lowest level of electricity bills, to be able to drop the VAT from seventy and a half percent to ten percent for the first portion of the electricity bill, which should cover a wide swath of persons. Inflation in Barbados was zero point six percent, really moving average this year. And I give those figures conscious that even when you give those figures, because somebody might be interested in a particular food item that has gone up, does not mean that they don't feel that impact. Now, I can be straight with you. I stopped buying all kind of fancy nuts, all kind of fancy cheeses a few years ago because them outside the basket of goods. But the basic food items that people need, food and fruit, and Carrie can tell you that every two weeks, a sheep comes to cabinet, if you give me time, my iPad is somewhere here, I can bring it up, and I can show you that there's still a range of food items that are cheaper today than they were in July twenty twenty two. We also created a price monitoring app so that you can decide, especially when you're doing your big shopping, because a small thing, item, you might decide, I stay in the north end, gain the town. But we've done it so that you can compare prices at different private establishments so that you can manage your own affairs. And it is important for us to continue to have these measures and to remain on top of it. But you cannot avoid inflation or some increases in cost of living because Barbados is, does not produce everything it needs. In fact, it imports the majority of what it needs. So much of our inflation is imported, but what we as a government have done, and one of the things we did with the price compa between July twenty twenty two and the eighteen months that followed, which has led, as I said, to a number of prices still being lower than July twenty twenty two, is that we asked merchants to moderate their markups to below fifteen percent rather than the typical fifteen to twenty five percent. And let's get real, because of our small population, it means that we are carrying higher prices on a smaller base than if you lived in a larger country. So when you combine all these things, the government has to remain alert, we will continue to do so. The consumer has to remain alert and to be able to act accordingly. In some instances, you may make decisions not to travel because if you're going to town to get something, you'll spend more money on gas than you'll save in cost of living prices. So you have to be discerning. What has not helped has been obviously the introduction of new tariffs by this country and the one that really, really threatened us, and we have managed, when I was Chair of Carriecom earlier this year, to stave it off. And I have never seen a larger mobilization and attendance of the Caribbean private sector than with this. And this was the intended levies that President Trump had announced on Chinese made ships with going into a US port. So that goods leaving typically Florida will stop in the US Virgin Islands. So you're paying first a one or one and a half million dollars on a shipment in Florida, then you're paying another one or one and a half million dollars when it reach US Virgin Islands. So your shipments all of a sudden would be carrying anywhere between two to three million dollars in additional costs if it stood at that. I immediately wrote President Trump when it came out, and the Caribbean private sector had worked with us across Carriecom and sent up a group as well, and we were able to have that initiative paused mercifully. They've paused it, but they have not said that it is completely out of consideration. What we have done, recognizing that most food and medical items come through Florida for the region, and most of it, most of us depend on it on a seven day shipping period, is that I asked Carrie to lead a delegation of the private sector and public sector officials, those who do the regulatory work to north west, north western Brazil, to the state of Roraima, to the city of Boavista. And most of us will not know that prior to air travel coming in in the nineteen fifties, there was far more movement between Brazil and Barbados than there is today. There were our major tourists at the end of the nineteenth, early twentieth century. A lot of Bejans went down there to work Venezuela, more movement into the continent. But what we recognize, Boavista has huge amounts of land, large production of vegetables and root crops, and a huge abattoir, particularly concentrating on beef. And the problem is transport. And they have a problem too because they are landlocked, and they have to go south four or five hours to go back north in many instances, but they're a ninety minute flight from Barbados. And we have now to open new markets. And Barbados, in order to offset some of the cost of living, if I am buying goods for two hundred and seventy thousand, it will always be higher than if I was buying goods for twenty seven million. Not true? So population, lack of population is hurting us. So what have we said? We've been talking and flirting with the idea of being a hub for agroprocessing because Barbados got thirty flights a week to the UK. Barbados got flights to Europe, Barbados got flights to the US, and Barbados won't get flights to Africa. And Barbados got flights to Central America. And we take things for granted because I didn't even realize there was no direct flight between Panama and London, but we got thirty flights a week to the UK. And we said, look, we were a hub for the wrong reasons for three hundred and something years. Let us be a hub now for the right reasons. And being a hub for the right reasons means that we can import volume and import, let me give you an example. So the men at the time told me that sweet potato was being produced in Barbados for five dollars, I think, or five something a kilo. But the same sweet potato obviously can be produced at volume, with volume, at a much lesser price. I think it was like a dollar something. I said, no problem. What we have to do is to begin to blend the product, the volumes and the pricing so that we can flatten out the prices for our people. But the only way we can get the benefit of volume is by developing an export industry for agroprocessed products. And therefore, we are going into agroprocessing. We are also expanding production of food. We have invested forty something million dollars in a new tissue culture lab. It is being built as we speak, and it will finish, I'm told, by about November, and that will allow us to get new plant and material. When I was a student, I remember Dame Billy coming to London and taking, I couldn't afford selfridges in them days, and she come and take me and say, come, let me take you for a treat. And we go through selfridges. And we go through selfridges, and the trays had sweet potatoes. And the next tray was Belgian sweet potatoes. And that one had a premium on it. We are talking seriously with the private farmers about expanding the production of breadfruit. And, and the truth is, there was a time when the body paid for breadfruit in Barbados. I see people buying breadfruits now. But breadfruit is a super fruit, a super food, sorry. And therefore, as I said in two thousand and thirteen, when we lost the election, I told people to make a decision to get to love it, you can learn to eat it stretch out, pickle, mash, roast, au gratin, all kinds of ways. Bottom line is, we need to do these things. The last instruction I asked the Minister of Agriculture to look at, particularly for the Rablan in St. Lucie and St. Philip, is not so much on food, but how the hell can you have something called aloe barbadiensis? And you ain't got no massive production of aloe in Barbados. How can you have a country that produce grapefruit? Across between Shadak and Orange. And we have not conquered the problems that the citrus fruits have been having in the Caribbean, but yet you can still get grapefruit out of Florida and other places. So we're doing a reset on some of those products, but we recognize that we're going to have to blend expanded local production with regional imports, but particularly from countries like Brazil. The truth is, we've been talking to Venezuela, who has gotten a little more complicated in recent times. But Brazil, for sure, and Colombia are interested in helping the region offset the, 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 the lack of food security. And I want to big up President Ali, because he is the lead head on agriculture and food security. And over the course of the last four years, he has been like a tremendous motor force in moving the issues of production, local and regional production in food and livestock in the Caribbean. And we're not where we want to be yet, but we are much better and on upward trajectory in a way that we weren't before. We have expanded peppers production. And when you look at the cost of pepper mash, I'm happy to say that I will soon tell the Jamaicans that I might do better Scotch bonnet than you. And certainly the ones that I see coming out of, of St. George, look, a little bigger than the ones I see in Jamaica. So, look, we, we can do, yes, St. George, we can do things. But we got lazy along the way, and we got into fast food and fast this and fast that. And we now realize if we're gonna stay healthy, we need to cut out anything, put in a tin. How, how it living, how, how, how it get fresh for you to eat if it ain't got some kind of preservative? You understand? So the last point on containing cost of living, that people need to take more responsibility for doing some stuff like our grandparents used to do. So if you grow a little things in the backyard and your neighbor growing something, exchange and work together, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister.
Kerry just wants to remind you of another executive order.
Simply to say that, I think it was yesterday, that another executive order would have come out, which impacts our cost of living indirectly, where if you send a remittance back to Barbados, you know how it is, you have a little trailer that you send to grand grand, that you're now gonna pay a one percent tax on that for it to get to Barbados. So that the, 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 the money that granny would have had from you is now subject to a one percent deduction as a result of that. So the international environment is really not helping us in this effort, and we have to constantly be re-engaging and re-engaging with our friends up here in the United States to help us get over these hurdles.
What, what I would like to say on that point, and we're gonna have to quicken up, because the others obviously come to tell us that we gotta be out by nine. But my point is this, we need to help each other more by sharing information. You heard me talk about communication earlier. And if the, the, the Ministry of Foreign Affairs can create that platform for the collection of information and then have a mechanism for validating what people send in, then it will put us in a much stronger position to be able to address some of your policy issues. Because many of the things that you face will also be faced by other Caribbean people. And it is acting in solidarity that we're likely to move the needle as we did with the levies on the Chinese-made ships coming into US ports. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Madam Prime Minister, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. We heard the term punching above your weight used a few times this evening. Well, my name is Chester McGivern, and I'm perhaps leading the one-person charge to have you sit in that seat as Secretary General of the United Nations, since, since you are already addressing global issues that others are running away from. And since your role will expand in that capacity, my question to you therefore, Madam Prime Minister, is if Benjamin Netanyahu ever puts foot in Barbados, will he be arrested?
I will simply say to you that Barbados is a country that adheres to law and international law. Thank you.
And by the way, by the way, I worked with Dr. Friedman when he was commissioned at the Health Department, so I will be banned from, thank you.
And, and I suspect it will be a good read. Thank you very much for your, yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. My name is Heather Nicole Sargent Greenwich. I'm sorry for the long name. My name is Heather Nicole Sargent Greenwich. One of my proudest days was becoming a Barbadian citizen by descent. But, but I wanted to know, being that, yes, there is a bill that is going to be passed soon for, to allow second or third generations. What happens to the generations of our children when we become by descent? For example, in America, when you get citizenship, it can pass down to your children. It wouldn't be considered by decent. Would there be anything in that bill that will cover children who are technically, being that I'm now a citizen, or like anybody else, their children be covered?
Thank you very much. The bottom line is that the immigration bill that is now before Parliament and before the Standing Select Committee on Governance proposes that down to great-grandchildren will have citizenship as of right. So that begins to deal with the first part of the equation. And why? How many of you in here got great-grandchildren? People don't want to admit their age no more. Look, you see a grandparent with a grandchild. You see the love between a grandparent and a grandchild. The grandchild is get away with what each child can get away with. And if you ever see a great-grandchild come in, it make the grandchild look even like a big adult. The point I'm making is, is that is your immediate family circle. Barbados, you heard, is underpopulated and dangerously so. We have an aging and a declining population. That's why we had to do the reforms to national insurance. That's why we have to, first thing that we did as a government was to create a National Population Commission, because I told you instinctively, as Minister of Education, I knew that we had lost more than a thousand people between when I was minister and that coming through as an age cohort. With respect to that, we have not looked at that, because citizenship by descent is defined down to great-grandchildren. Citizenship by birth is different. Having said that, if you are a great-great-grandchild, the way the bill is constructed, you will get there even if not automatically, easily. So we need people. And if we need people, who do we start with first? Sorry?
Our own.
Our own. So that there is, the, the, we gathering was not by accident, neither in two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty-five. It is about beginning to call people back to it. And the way how things going, a number of you may want to come for us. But even with that, we need to reach out to our other Caribbean brothers and sisters. And then Mr. Barrow did something in the early seventies with the immigration bill. Mr. Barrow said then, when he passed the Immigration Act as it is now, that if you had skills or if you are investing, you could be considered for immigrant status. The truth is that immigrant status is something that nobody talks about anymore. People talk about residency. People talk about permanent residency. Don't talk about immigrant status. For whatever reason, migrants have been given a bad name globally and everything. We've learned how to move money globally, but we don't want people to move globally, which is another story. But that's because we don't see people and value people. And we value the one percent who got money. So what we have done in this bill is to take that same preset, but encapsulate it in terms of permanent residence with a pathway to citizenship. I have made it clear, the government of Barbados will not sell citizenship, because that devalues all of our passports. But what we will do is to create a platform that encourages people to join us, encourages people to be part and parcel of the effort to build out. Because as you know from this country, you need people if you're going to propel growth. You can't have growth without skills. You can't have growth without labor. And therefore, what we want to do is to create an opportunity for your children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, while at the same time saying that this country will not commodify our nationhood. We will modernize it. We will be a hospitable place for those who can bring skills and investment. And we will have a special clarion call for Belgians and multiple generations. And we will commit that after our own, the next set of people who are closest to us, our other brother, our other Caribbean brothers and sisters. So it's gonna take time, but the bill is before Parliament. If there's those of you who go on the Parliament website, download the bill. If you feel that you want to see improvements that you think will make a difference, submit it to the Standing Select Committee. And I imagine that between now and the end of October, they will be having their written submissions and hearings, and then reporting back to the country, to the main Parliament, hopefully by early November with respect to this. So let the word go forth that you have a home to come home to, please.
And one last thing.
And, and I say this particularly for the second and third and fourth generation Belgians up here.
And one last thing pertaining to the more-
To all Eric Holder's children and grandchildren should be able to come home as of right.
To the older generation or the more mature generation, where before technology was introduced with their baptismal or their birth certificate, where one letter might be off or one name might be different. When they went from a, from handwritten to electronically, the process where one letter might look one and it was entered. Is there a different process other than going through scrutiny and getting that handled?
So, so let me say that you've read, typically, these things are usually done by a lawyer and affidavit. But I, I understand that that costs people money. And there may be a way for us to look at correction of errors. And the reason why I'm saying so is because even on the voters' lists, this notion of addresses being spelt one way, or you leave off a full stop on the word A V E for avenue, or all of these things end up giving you an untidy list. And I've said to the Electoral and Boundaries Commission Chair that in addition to the registration forms and the notice of transfer, that we may just need a simple form for correction of errors. And if we have that correction of errors form, then they're the ones who will eventually take over aspects related to what we call the civil registry. Right now, it is still with the Supreme Court, but once we get past the enumeration exercise, we're gonna have to have and create a dedicated pool for the, the civil registry. By the way, and this is important for all of you here, we are going through an enumeration exercise at home. We have not cleaned up the voters' lists since nineteen ninety-six, almost thirty years. It is therefore responsible for a ballooned voters' list that bears no relationship to the reality of the numbers on the ground. The postman and the registering officers have been working for the last few weeks. I expect that some of you will hear that circulars have gone to the addresses at home that you have. Obviously, the first process is that they will send out circulars. They will see what circulars come back to them, and then they will publish lists in the papers. Now, there are persons, technically speaking, if you have not come home at all for, I can't remember, it's five or seven years, that you can come off the voters' lists. And therefore, those of you who come back periodically and want to stay on the list to be able to vote need to be alert for when those lists are published, so that you can make sure that you identify yourself and your name is not taken off as not being able to be found or wondering whether you are deceased or whatever. So you're gonna need the, and the Ministry of Foreign Affairs is gonna have to alert people in all the jurisdictions that this enumeration exercise is live and that over the course of the next few weeks locally in Barbados. But for those of you who come home regularly, you may want to ensure that your name still remains on the list. Let me say, and hasten to say, that if your name is taken off for whatever reason, you are still entitled to be registered to put back on so long as you meet the initial qualifications that you had anyhow that would have put you on the list in the first place. So spread the word among people up here and just tell them, be alert and be ready to look for those lists when they come, okay? Thank you very much. We're gonna do some rapid fire. I promise to do more rapid fire. There's one topic that will stop me, and I know that I will be long on again, but we'll see. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Prime Minister, welcome to Brooklyn. My name is Ricardo Baker. I'm a health service manager for the New York City Department of Health for the past twenty years. So Tom Frieden is one of my favorite commissioners.
So we're, we're in good company.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm also the son of Ralph Walker, the director of the Barbados Youth Service.
Yep.
I see Uncle, I see Uncle, my uncle's right there. Tony Bass, I'm talking with Tony.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm here to ask you some, something else.
Yes, sir.
I wonder if your government is gonna adopt the New York City Department of Health, Department of Police policies for the CPAP program, community policing, stop and frisk, and the buyback-
CPAP.
Community police, they're going to-
Yeah, we already have a community policing-
Yeah, but it's not as strong, I'm following it, it's not as strong.
And, and it may not be strong, but it has been expanded recently, because what we took a decision in last September to be able to have all of the members, for example, of the Barbados Police Service Band, start also to get involved in the community policing, so that we can have a better-
Musicians?
Engagement, musicians.
I like the military part, I like the military.
Well, and therefore, you should be aware that we also have something called the Barbados Youth Advance Corps. And while that was for the first time, we have gone to scale. The Barbados Youth Service for over thirty years only catered to less than two hundred people a year. This government took a decision, and it was affected by COVID, but we're back on stream again, that we would be prepared to take a thousand students a year for two years, which means that the program would have up to two thousand people. And as you can see from the numbers of births, that is a significant proportion of the population. We started off by keeping it independent, but there is a growing belief now that we have to have the Barbados Defense Force more involved in the direction of the Barbados Youth Advance Corps. We are at a happy stage where for the first time, the residential facilities are now being finished. And why is that important? Because we recognize either through that or through what used to be the Prince's Foundation or the King's Foundation, now that King Charles has a program as well on the ground, that you need King's Trust, that you need, you need residential intervention to break cycles. You can't just do it by a day release program. So you need people to come in for eight, ten weeks, twelve weeks, so that you can really get into their heads and get to understand what it is they're facing.
What about stop and frisk?
Stop and frisk, we do stop and search. And the police have, I don't like using the word frisk for all kinds of reasons. But, but yes, the police have been- But yes, the police have been doing more patrols. Look, I want to address the issue of crime upfront and not through the back door. Because if there's one thing that continues now, I should say there are two things that keep me up at night. One is the lack of skills. Because however which way you look at it, you cannot build out a country unless you've got skills. I gave you the example of the hospital, the approval of posts. I could talk to you about the Water Authority. I could talk to you about Ministry of Public Works. I could talk to you about a whole, we do not have enough people to do the things necessary, particularly in highly specialized areas. Don't even talk about utility economists and people in renewable energy specialties, et cetera. The second thing that keeps me up at night is the crime, and it is the gun crime. And it is not just Barbados. In fact, it is the whole region. We are not as bad as most in the region, but we have started to see signs that have us deeply disturbed and that have caused us to have a whole-of-nation approach. Why? In twenty eighteen, when we came to government, the biggest risk was the value of our dollar. And we had a whole-of-nation approach, and we were able to resolve that and get through it. Then, when we finished paying the debt and we were ready to move in December twenty nineteen, the debt was restructured, we then bonks up COVID. We had a whole-of-nation approach to COVID, including the opposition, all of us. And we succeeded with minimizing the level of deaths and minimizing the level of economic and social dislocation that would otherwise have happened. The same approach is being taken to lawlessness and crime now by us. And in fairness, we have seen peaks and troughs with respect to the gun crime. This year started off with a little more pace than I would ever have been happy with. For the first six months, we had twenty-eight murders. For, since the beginning of July one, we've had limited that to seven. I have never been one to get excited by numbers in crime because as good as you are today, you could be as bad as you wish you were never next week. And I believe that this is not a short-term issue. Barbados did not get like this in a year, five years, ten years, or even twenty. This is a successive decline over a period of time. And you've heard me say a few things. Everybody obviously believes that their child is the best. But more often than not, a lot of the times, the police record doesn't reflect that or the type of behavior doesn't reflect it. And when you start to dig deeper, you then begin to understand where the screws have gotten loose and why we are where we are. We've said to Beijans, you see something, say something. But you're up against a culture that says, don't talk. And that culture has been reinforced in particular from here in this city, in New York, and then reinforced also by the dancehall culture and hip-hop culture particularly.
Madam Prime Minister, what about a buyback gun policy? Do we have that here?
You can do that, but at the end of the day, when you buy back guns, you may just be giving money to the same people to go and buy guns again. That is why we've never liked it. Look, I accept that I have some personal views, but I also have views as a head of state, head of government, sorry, that may be different. Left the meaner boy without his guns. That's the truth. But the horse has bolted the stables long before he became Prime Minister. And the reality is that I don't know. How many of you remembered that we have been dealing with this issue of the port being vulnerable, airport, seaport, all of them, for some time? When we came to office, Kerry, what was the position at the seaport? There were virtually no functioning scanners there for some time. And in the middle of an IMF program, we went and bought scanners for the port in spite of being in IMF program. We have tried to put a number of measures in place and will continue to do so as government. But I'm gonna come back to it because law enforcement and crime prevention are the two pillars upon which action must take place. The first thing we did was we increased the number of judges because getting things through the law courts, we had a backlog of over ten thousand criminal cases that we inherited. We increased the number of criminal judges from two to eight. We doubled the number of prosecutors, I think from seven or eight to sixteen. And we have been literally, and because I knew I was coming here, I said to the AG, AG, give me the list of things that we have done as a government to improve the criminal justice system before you start to talk about crime prevention. So I just told you about the judges from two to eight. Under the last government, the two judges doing criminal matters rotated between the criminal and civil courts still. We now have eight. We increased, I said sixteen. We went from eight prosecutors to twenty prosecutors we now have in the system. We then turned and ended up ensuring that in the backlog from January twenty twenty-three to June twenty twenty-four, five hundred and eighty-four indictable matters were disposed of, including sixty-seven murder indictments. Now, I want to pause here for a minute because when I was a young criminal lawyer, you couldn't get bail for murder. Full stop. I still feel that it is wrong. But regrettably, the jurisprudence across the entire Commonwealth and the world for that matter, and most common law systems, has said that you have to be able to give persons bail for all offenses after a certain period of time that may be viewed as a disproportionate burden on the person in comparison to the fact that they've not yet been found guilty or innocent. What we eventually did, and we came at it five or six years ago and did a bail bill, and we found that that new bail act still wasn't working. And we then went again at it in September or October last year. And we took the bail provisions from South Africa. And we did South Africa deliberately because South Africa has a strong constitutional court. And those provisions have not been challenged for the most part and certainly have not been struck down over the thirty-year period of the South Africa Constitution. That new legislation has very, very detailed provisions that go way beyond are you a flight risk to are you a threat to the community? And by your very presence, are you likely to cause either yourself to be hurt or others in the immediate vicinity? And that has strengthened the police's hands significantly. If I say to you that some of the murders that have taken place at home were to get a particular individual, and that individual had more lives than a cat and, but has been responsible for at least three or four people, four people dying, and potentially a large number as well being wounded because people were trying to find that one individual. They've eventually been able to deal with, and they can deal with those kinds of situations because you strengthen the provisions of the bail act to allow the court now not just to take flight risk or the traditional narrow base of things for the consideration of bail. In addition to that, we have increased the minimum penalties for firearms. Ten years imprisonment for illegal use of a firearm as a first offense and not less than twenty years for a second offense or more. We have introduced pre-bargaining legislation, which was never there in the last, in recent times, which will allow us to be able to deal effectively. And in some instances, people will turn and give evidence against others in order to be able to reduce the penalty that they themselves will face. And you know how that has worked up here to be able to help the criminal justice system in the US. In addition, we have recognized that there are some trials where both the defendant and the prosecution believe that because of the complexity of the charges, it should be done by a judge alone as opposed to having a jury present. And that legislation has also passed. We have also, and I want to be very careful and to remind you, that we have also introduced whistleblower legislation, new anti-corruption legislation. And we have ensured that we have created a post, a dedicated post of deputy registrar in the registry to make sure that we can introduce case management in criminal files, which was never, ever a part of the system before. We have new criminal procedure rules, and I expect them to come before the parliament and to be done very, very quickly. Kerry is reminding me, we also had a new proceeds of crime act, and we also made the offense of unexplained wealth, something that we have to go forward to. We have now introduced and said, and it is contentious for some, that there must be truth verification testing for those who want to access the airport or the seaport. Now, we're not telling you that you have to be tested, but we tell you that if you want to get in the port or the seaport, you have to have truth verification testing. If you don't want to be tested, then it means that we will look and see where else we can position you in the service because a guard is a guard is a guard, and it doesn't necessarily be limited by who you are. Or there may be other roles that you can play in the public service. And if, of course, we can't find anything for you at all in the public service, the government then will do what it has to do in terms of honoring your rights because we are a decent member of the International Labour Organization and believe in the dignity of work and all of the rights for workers. That truth verification testing is critical. And don't let us fool ourselves. Guns don't walk and guns don't talk. They get in because human beings allowed them in, and they are used. People kill people, not guns. And therefore, all of these things matter. As it relates to the police specifically, we have also strengthened the terms and conditions. Two years ago, it was reported to me that we had a problem with people in uniform, being paid much higher than detectives and other persons doing work in special branch, and that we were at risk of losing all of our detectives. And I intervened and arranged for the Ministry of Public Service and the police to settle what was then to be known as a new criminal investigation allowance, rationalizing the allowances that they got and ensuring, and in most instances, they got a significant increase to what they were getting before. It has caused a little unease among the uniform rank now. And I've had to remind the uniform rank that we're in the middle of regrading of all government jobs, job evaluation on all government jobs right now with the cooperation of the University of the West Indies. And I would expect that within the next year, that process will be completed and greater fairness will come. I'm the first to tell you that I believe we have to have better terms and conditions across the public service for a number of critical areas like police, like nurses, like teachers, like specialized areas where we're not getting people come forward. In addition to that, we created the ranks of senior constable for constables who were there long to make sure that we still find a way of better compensating them rather than leaving them as a constable on a flat all the time. We also said that if you have special constables who have been in position for more than three years, they can immediately convert to being police constables without having to do more because they have been effectively exposed to the job for three years continuously. And just asking them to go back and do another six months to become a police constable does not make any sense, given that. Having said that, we have now agreed as well that we would create another sixty special constable posts that will allow us to increase the numbers of special constables and at the same time, try to fill the remaining vacancies in the Barbados Police Service. I am going through all of these things because whenever government is finishing modernizing the criminal justice system and doing all of that, how do you deal with a boy hiding a gun in a grandmother closet under a hat? How do you deal with a child whose mother or father or grandparents did not buy them a thick gold chain but are wearing it when the day come, and nobody has asked them where you get that from? How do I deal with the fact that too many people are sleeping late on a Sunday morning instead of making sure that the children go to church or if it is the temple or the, whatever religion you belong to? Children need the early groceries. They must know right from wrong. R I G H T is not W R O N G. I am saying all these things because without that partnership between family and community, between community and whether it is employers, public or private, whether it is churches or community groups or sporting groups, we are not going to be successful. And those who for partisan reasons want, hey, the government, the government, the government. It's easy for a politician to say so. I accept that. But if we want to be serious, and that is why I've told the leader of the opposition as recent as this week, I know we haven't gotten to where we want you to be in terms of helping to have this unified approach, but the country needs it. And the country needs it because you and I will not be here in ten years' time. Sorry, madam. You understand? And therefore, we must govern for the future. And the bottom line is, I'm happy that the Advisory Council on Citizen Security has been formed. It's a broad-based body that has from educators to criminologists to representatives of the bar, to persons who have themselves been victims as well as persons who have been perpetrators. Because we must understand the experience of all in being able to settle policy. We regret the resignation of Professor Newton, and we thank her for her service. And then we took the decision to allow the co-chairmanship between the President of the Senate, Reginald Farley, and Mr. Michael Ashley, who, as you know, is a senior counsel at the Criminal Bar. In addition to that, we had a number of meetings in the last few months with the social partnership. This is the private sector. This is the labor movement. And then we brought in members of the social justice community, Social Justice Committee, to be part of that. That is the churches, the Christian council, the evangelical council, the social workers group, all of them. Because when we come now to crime prevention and understanding this young generation and understanding the mental health issues, understanding the substance abuse. Before, when I first came back to practice law, crack was a problem, the crack epidemic. Then it went down. But we now have, we have these peaks and troughs with substance abuse. And what we have now is people using a lot of drugs that look like normal medication or then others going into a pharmacy and buying the essential elements of creating something. I will not repeat it. I ain't getting the body no instructions. You understand? But doing things that on the face of it is just too easy and cannot be prevented easily by law enforcement. So that we can't have only a law enforcement approach to these things. You have to get into people's heads. You have to get into people's behavior. You have to get into the families and the communities. And then when we were growing up, how many community groups that had both the places, sporting groups and cultural groups? All of a sudden, there's a significant diminution in that. But I can't blame the young people for it because it is the adults who have not agreed to give up their time again and to volunteer their time to make sure that we can keep these kids on the straight and narrow. I'll end with this. Children mock parents as children. They put on the mother's big shoes and lipstick and everything and walk around the house at four and five and three years old. When they become teenagers, they want to do everything that the adults do in two. So they get risky behavior. They wanna smoke. They want to taste a little alcoholic drink. They want to engage in sexual activity and other things. They want to ride motorcycles. They want to do risky things. But where we fail is that we teach our children how to manage risk as little children, how to cross the road, how to light a match, how to do certain things. But we then don't want to teach them how to manage risk as adults. And we have to find a way of teaching them how to be the guardian of their own future and how to do these things responsibly. And I'm the first to tell you, I'm not looking for votes or no votes. I'm the first to tell you, this is not a government problem. This is a societal problem. And unless we band together as one, we're not going to face it. The last, last point is the impact and influence of social media on our children and on the mental health and mental wellness of our children. If you spend, you hold it with a- and you then compare yourself to 4K and 8K digital, you will never look as good in the mirror as a 4K and an 8K digital that got filters. So that you will always start with a deficit. And if you let and lease out space in your head to that, you then have a spiralling taking place that carries too many of our children into mental instability and regrettably, sometimes worse than that. So, look, I fear, and this is not for Barbados alone, this is a global phenomenon. And we have to find a way to treat into these issues. I hope that I've answered all the issues in relation to crime and to let you know that the government is not dodging it, but by the same token, we are being very sanguine. This must be a whole-of-nation approach if we are to get success and it cannot be judged in one year or two year or five year. You know, I almost, I'm not an alcoholic, I hardly drink in fact, but I almost feel I know what it is to be a member of Alcoholics Anonymous. Because in this particular instance, we must live every day as if it is the one day that counts, both in terms of how we deal with our children, our communities, our neighbours, and how we ensure that if we see wrong, we say something rather than turning a blind eye and letting corruption and illicit activity spawn itself into what I call terrorism. Because it is domestic terrorism to go in a gas station and Lego bullets on a Sunday morning when people come in from church to buy a little cheese or a little milk that they forget to buy. And those are the things that we must stop. I make the point that the Barbados Defence Force will work collaboratively, as it has been doing for decades, with the Barbados Police Service. But we've had to strengthen some of the things in there. We're strengthening the training and we're strengthening the access to technology, we're strengthening the legislation. But when all of that is done, we need to act as one people to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Prime Minister.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Hiya Cynthia Roberts. I was a teacher in Barbados and an adjunct professor here in the United States. And so this, I have a suggestion and I had a question, but in the interest of time, I think I'll let my question go. The suggestion is this, just in case this initiative is not already in place in Barbados as you start to revamp the educational system, would you consider requiring that students have at least one hundred, this is just a number, it could be any number, at least one hundred hours of community service from first form to fifth form in order to graduate?
Let me just tell you that you obviously were listening in on the social partnership meetings. We have agreed that we are going to, and we're waiting for the Ministry of Education to clean it up and roll it out, but that basically, we need to make participation in either uniform groups or service clubs mandatory from Form One to Form Six in secondary school. And that we will encourage it fully at primary school. The government will work to build out capacity in the scouts, the cadets and those other uniform groups, but there are also a lot of other voluntary groups, 4H, Key Club, et cetera. And then at the post-secondary level, and Kerry knows because we discussed it only this week again, when we reintroduced free education in twenty eighteen, because most people forget that the Democratic Labour Party removed free education in twenty thirteen for persons at Cave Hill and at the University of the West Indies. We did it, recognising that there had to be something back. We are making a choice to pay your education, but it means that we can do other things within the community as well. And that is where we came up with Operation Give Back, where everybody, I think, has either a hundred and fifty or two hundred hours a year. So whether you're at University of the West Indies or Barbados Community College or the Samuel Jattman Prescott Institute, you have to give back to the community. What we recognise is that it needs some more tweaking and we need to have a technological platform that allows us to better monitor, because while some are doing it diligently, some are not necessarily being faithful to it.
My daughters did the international Baccarat diploma and in order to have that diploma, you have to have the hours clocked.
Absolutely.
They must be signed off and logged into the system. So that's why I suggested ours, because I think it would have helped our very youthful eighty-year-old.
Yeah.
If we had something like that in place, that would have helped.
We're going there, so thank you, as I said, you were listening to the social partnership meetings. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Graham Weatherspoon. I am from Brooklyn. Second generation. I want to thank you for being here, Madam Prime Minister. I was going to go to crime because I'm a retired detective. Snitches don't get stitches. Snitches don't get stitches. They get less time. In order for you to snitch, you have to be part of the criminal act. When you fail to inform law enforcement of what's going on, you put yourself and your family and your community at risk. And there aren't that many people on the island of Barbados that an incident is not going to impact you in some way. A friend of mine called me, we were on the way to church on Sunday, her cousin was shot twice. Sunday in Barbados. But I'm going to move on from the crime.
Say thank you for your words and I really do feel that each of us has a role to play, whether from out here or back home. And that change in a culture is possible. Never used to play banjo music on a Sunday? It changed. By the same token, people used to say, as we discussed this evening, you'd never, people used to smoke cigarettes. People used to drive without seatbelts. People used to do a number of things that they've changed their behaviour on. We can change our behaviour on this. The Caribbean, regrettably, is in the top six, is six out of the top ten countries in the world for the highest per capita homicide rate. I've made the point, we pay a heavy price for the Second Amendment rights of Americans, because the guns flow down and the lack of gun control here has made available tools of mass destruction. I make the point that Africa was only conquered because Europe used gunpowder to conquer them. And if gunpowder took over Africa, imagine what guns can do to small states in the Caribbean. So that this is nothing to play with and I thank you therefore for your support and your clear language that you've used thus far.
Thank you. In the nineteen nineties, my cousin's daughter was at the consulate serving. Bill Clinton sent a container to Barbados. It appeared suspicious when it arrived at the port and the Prime Minister was notified of the container. He said, "Break the locks." The locks were broken on that container, which was full of firearms. And that was in the nineteen nineties. Ain't nothing changed but the date on the calendar. The weapons flowing, yes, into your country. I'm sure many of them are coming from this country. I will communicate with the consulate, because I don't want to discuss what I
Absolutely, and I appreciate that.
But we need to understand that as people, as black people, they will interfere in everything that we have to make sure that it doesn't succeed. That is their intent. Lieutenant Colonel Earl D. Wood said, back in the nineteen seventies, when I was one of his students, he said, "We teach the people what to think, because they're stupid." And these things have wrecked our children's lives.
I agree. And it's left to me, as I said, I do not think children should have smartphones in schools. And that's the kind of conversation nationally that we're going to have to have at home, because at the end of the day, we have to work out how it is having a negative impact. And this is not just Barbados, across the world now, people are making decisions to reverse a lot of these things.
If you can't find the information on slave codes and such, because AI is not giving it to you, you can read the Willie Lynch letter, written by a Bayesian plantation owner who came here and taught Americans how to treat their slaves.
And the truth is, you'll find it on other AI platforms, but Microsoft, or PayPal, for whatever reason, refused to give it to you.
Also, you mentioned a sewer treatment plant.
Yeah.
There is a company which remediates all types of water, black water from petroleum plants. They can remediate any water organically, no chlorine, no fluoride, no chemicals. And they have an office in the Caribbean, and I know they have one in Guyana, Dove Biotech. So as you move forward in that area, and it also will impact your public health, drinking water is a key asset today across the globe.
Food and water, the new oil, thank you. Let's go a little quicker. The others, I have it coming on both sides of me. I would like to spend all night with you, but I'm told that we can't. So, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Prime Minister. My name is Deborah Hoy. I was born here in Brooklyn, but I'm here with my mother today, she's from Christchurch. I just have a question about the action and initiatives that are being taken to engage the youth of the diaspora. And like, pretty much since we talked about the population issue, I'm wondering if there's anything that you would like us to know as far as having, being in conversation with each other and having a symbiotic relationship to try and like remediate some of the issues that you're both experiencing in our home country, but then also like engage our community around the world.
I think the first thing that we need to do is, and I keep saying this and it's taken long, and Lorenzo, Consul General and others have told me that we've made some changes to the platform for people to register, that some people are ambivalent and feel that we want the information for nefarious purposes, that is not the case. But if we don't know who is out there and we don't know what talents people have out there and what skills people have and what passions people have, then we can't match people with problems and try to create innovative solutions. So I'm asking everybody, please let us know who is there by registering, by giving us the information and then we're in a position to start matching, because I would much rather find people whose roots are Bayesian to help us create solutions for the Caribbean than to have to go afar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mrs, Madam Prime Minister.
I have to pull down the mic, we're not hearing you, thank you.
And the day is guest. My question unfortunately was asked previously, but I said I stood in line too long not to come up here and ask it again.
But I'll ask you just to be able to say, which one was it and it was on what?
I am trying to be a Bayesian. My son, my son tells me I'm
Don't stand in the line any longer. Come to the Consul General, let us make sure that we can find you away. So don't stand in the line any longer, you come.
But I have another question. My son tells me I'm a wannabe Bayesian.
You can't be a wannabe Bayesian. Tell them that a Bayesian by choice is sometimes the most passionate, so don't worry.
My grandmother was a Brathwaite and my grandfather was a Collie Moore, so you can't be more than that.
So when a Brathwaite had a Collie Moore last name, you've got to be Bayesian. Thank you.
My other question is, why does it take so long when you have a relative that passed away? It takes forever for your documents to be approved and for you to get your property or whatever.
So the truth is that the probate rules are old and what we are doing is revisiting them to try, here Kerry talked about deconstruct, reconstruct. I feel as though we could be a vacuum cleaner government, because we are going in literally and taking things that were just accepted processes for decades and trying to change them. Some have moved quicker than others, but this is one, we've been, the Chief Justice has been able to bring down the backlog significantly and what we're trying to do is to reduce the timeline to as to keep current. So I'll ask you to bear with us, but I am confident that we've seen appreciable progress in the reduction of the backlog with respect to probate and letters of administration. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening.
People still joining the line? Well, it's going to get me put out of my hair. Go ahead.
My name is Nika Nurse and my grandfather and great-grandfather, who is a nurse, last name is Nurse, that's how I am, the lineage of Bayesian. However, I run a platform called Best Dress Plate, which is an award-winning platform dealing with bringing Caribbean food to the masses. And I've held a dinner in Barbados for the past two years in which I've brought in chefs from the diaspora to come into Barbados, because Barbados has done a really good job at building out the restaurant industry. This year, last year, I bought a chef from Jamaica, Stishina Bush, and they inspired me this year to do all farm-to-table, because agriculture is big and you brought that up earlier today.
So Chris and Lisa Binns were just at Carrie Festa in Barbados?
Yes.
And were able to use the same plant-based food? And in fact, we took them and allowed them to do training of a number of people and we hope to have them do also training along with other people within the school meal service. Because if we can get children to eat differently, then they can carry those habits for a lifetime.
And that's the mission for us at Best Dress Plate. I actually spoke with Ainsley for the IIC, because this year, we're committing to seventy percent of the food for the farm-to-table to come from the farmers. But my question is, what are you doing for partnerships, for community partners, such as myself? I'm based here, but I have a lot of access to agriculture and farmers to come into Barbados to also
I think I would simply say to you that I can't give you a blanket answer, but once we see projects that are worthwhile, that have the capacity particularly to link sectors, health, agriculture and tourism, health, agriculture and small business, then that is what we want. Kerry will tell you that I am not happy with the Food and Rum Festival, as we have put it on for years. Everybody knows that. I feel that it needs to be parish-based first before it is national. And that if it is parish-based, it causes us to do those kinds of linkages between farmers and small shops and the Ministry of Health and to change behaviour and to change things. And then when you come to the national level, you have everybody, the best of local, the best of the region and the best from above. And let me use the opportunity to big up Paul Carrington, because I'm told that Caboah has been listed in New York Times as number four in the top fifty restaurants in the whole of the United States of America. That is a Bayesian boy who has left from your constituency, Kerry. Then he went to Australia, then he was here and his restaurant is mashing up the place. I told him that I expect to hear soon that he might get a Michelin star, so let me keep praying for him.
Well, hopefully you could come to the dinner, because I will be bringing Bayesian chefs from America to come back to Barbados.
I look forward to that. I look forward to that. And that's an essential part of what we offer as a nation within the hospitality experience. So the quality of restaurants will always matter. Thank you.
Good evening, Prime Minister.
Keep healthy by eating where you grow. Thank you.
Good evening, Prime Minister. My name is Tatisha Clark. I am the grandchild of a woman from Saint Joseph and a man from Saint Philip and I'm looking forward to getting my Bayesian citizenship as well. While here in the United States, I'm Assistant Head of School for Diversity, Equity and Inclusion at a major independent school here in the city. My question to you is, being that our motto is pride in industry, how are we persevering, preserving and promoting Bayesian culture, particularly in education? As my grandparents, my parents, people who've been educated there, still are learning about colonialism. My godchildren are there, what are we doing to be able to understand about Black culture?
A large part of the educational transformation is the decolonisation of education.
Excellent.
Okay? And we brought in, among the teachers that we've used, Rosemary Campbell Stevens, who's a Jamaican who grew up in the UK, who has been recognised as one of the leaders on decolonisation in education. In addition to that, we've said that we need citizenship education. And citizenship education, the National Transformation Initiative led by Dr Leacock has been responsible for developing that curriculum and keyifying it, because sometimes it's easier for kids to learn things through the playing of a game than just the boring lectures or whatever. It is important that people know that, yes, it is okay to want to join a club like JC's and Kiwanis and all of these clubs that were formed in some small town here in the US, but what about the Barbados landscape?
Yes.
That's been around for a hundred and something years and that effectively provided the mechanism for families to build resilience. We talk about a susu, the Nigerians would tell you, only recently that they use the word isusu. I did an interview with Trevor Noah just here recently that should be streaming sometime soon. And he talks about the equivalent of what they did in South Africa too. So there are a lot of things that we have about our culture and that we are not sharing with each other and I'm hoping that in the curriculum reform that is part of the educational transformation, that we are able to preserve those elements of our heritage and to pass it on. Okay? Thank you. And good luck with your efforts. I know you're working in an endangered area at this point in time. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Prime Minister.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm glad that you're representing us.
Thank you.
But my question for you today is on transport. But my question for you today is on transportation.
Yes.
You said come home and develop and buy property. I did. I came home, I brought property in Coville. My son also is part of it. And transportation is bad.
Done with public transport?
Public transport.
Done with buses or taxis?
Buses, buses.
Yeah. So, so the country did not buy buses for a very long period of time. And in spite of being in the IMF program, the first thing we did was to buy 55 electric buses. We also turned around and divested a number of the buses that weren't working, the gasoline buses, to former drivers. And that started what is known as the TAP program, the Transportation Augmentation Program. We then got a donation of 35 buses, I believe it was, from the Chinese. And we now have another order for another 35. And only this week I would have agreed with the others that we will put in another order, because it is particularly in the rural areas. Not so much in the St. Michael and Christchurch areas, but I take note. Coville might have special things because of being a residential area with off-road. And you may have to look and see how the public transport system can integrate inside there with their routes. But before we even get there, there are rural districts in St. Lucie and St. Peter, St. Joseph, St. Andrew, St. Philip, St. John. And we want to be able to continue to increase the number of buses available. We are still going through a restructuring of the Transport Board, and we are working towards moving to a mass transit authority where the government is not involved in the ownership and operation of buses, but in the regulation of the public transport system. In fairness, COVID licked us in the belly. Because what did you have to do in COVID? Instead of you being able to carry the number of passengers that you would normally carry in a bus, you had to have what? Physical distancing. So it meant that the subsidies that we thought that we would put behind us with the Transport Board, we in fact had to face increased subsidies because of the physical distancing rules. So we're not yet where we want to be, ma'am. But I give you the assurance that in the course of the next 18 months or so, you will continue to see a significant expansion of public transport. We're looking at route optimization software. We are looking at cashless system for the buses. And we're looking at GPS and cameras for all of them. In fact, some of them already have already. And, and it is now about getting enough of the transport providers on the road so that Bayjans, even when they have cars, will decide, like, Caracas Town, home today, I'm taking the bus down because, one. In any event, young people, and I want to note this, young people have a different issue and a different relationship with transport. A lot of young people do not believe that you should spend $100,000 or $70,000 on a car, and from the day you buy it, it is depreciating. And that they can, and would prefer to spend that money as they need it, save money, and use the difference to travel. So we're also managing different expectations. And we'll have to use technology to help us map, map the timing of the transport system so that it becomes more convenient for you as a consumer to get there. We are on our way, but we're not yet there.
Yeah, but my question was, right? My question was, I was told that there is a bus that comes through. But as you said, there are not enough buses. But the distance that you have to walk for a bus, which is a St. Patrick's bus.
Yeah, that's why I said because-
It's very lonely.
Yeah. That's why I said that one part of that is a function of not enough buses. Part of it is a function of not having route optimization software. And part of it is a function of communities also indicating where they want to be able to see more bus service. So we're working there, but you'll have to augment the number of providers of the service to get where you want to see. Okay? So we're getting there, but we ain't there yet.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening, Prime Minister. Thank you so much for being here.
Can't keep extending the line though, because this is it.
My name is Horace Davis. I'm born in Jamaica, and I'm the president of an organization called the Caribbean American Society of New York, whose overarching mission is to build and cultivate a stronger sense of pride within the Caribbean community. Right here in New York City, five of the top 10 immigrant countries are Caribbean islands. The number one immigrant country in New York City is the Caribbean island, the Dominican Republic. And we're here in the borough of Brooklyn, which hosts the largest Caribbean community outside of the Caribbean. With your leadership and the leadership of your great team, my question for you is, how can you and your team leverage the enormous influence that we have, just in terms of numbers, to bring forward greater influence here in New York so that as a community, we can also help the islands? So basically, my question is, how do we work together, not just as Barbados, Jamaicans?
I was about to tell you by working together. But you can only work together by talking to each other and talking with each other. And let me be very clear, that the future of small states will become more and more of an issue because of, if you do not have an international rules-based order, then it means that might determines who wins. And we all know that if might is the only determinant in a playground, what happens is bullying. And when that happens, and without the intervening arm of fairness, then you have an unsustainable situation that can lead to anarchy. This notion of, I am a Dominican, I am a Jamaican, I am a Vincentian, I am a Bayesian, I am a Guyanese, all that don't mean one. You understand? And if you don't start to see yourself, whether you're Cuban, whether you're Bayesian, whether you're Trinidadian, whether you're wherever, Grenadian, as one, then you're not going to have the solidarity that is necessary to go through these very difficult times. So work together. Thank you.
We stand to work with you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Prime Minister Motley. My name is Lisa Fenty-Evelyn. I am the Wellness Director at Medgar Evans College. And I was born in Barbados, Barbados. I came here at five years old, and I would love to go back one day. I actually been back 2017, and I was exploring the peg farms. So I'm really, really excited about that. Yes, exactly. I'm from St. Michael, from tweets I wrote. So my question is, um... Prime Minister Motley, as the first woman Prime Minister of Barbados and a global voice on equity, what lessons would you share with young women in our community who are striving to step into leadership roles where they are often underrepresented?
One, to be faithful to themselves. Two, to make sure that they are always prepared. Because the worst thing is, as you know, we have to be, to put in twice as much to be considered half as good. So always be prepared, always be disciplined. And you just heard what I said about cooperation and solidarity. So good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Prime Minister Motley. I'm Julia Mandeville, a proud Bayesian from Christchurch. I'm also a public health doctoral candidate, graduating soon with training in, thank you.
Congratulations.
Epidemiology and social and behavioral science from GMU. So hi to my Washington DC people. So specifically, my dissertation focuses on trends on adverse pregnancy outcomes like miscarriage in Barbadian women and associated psychosocial outcomes. And I have some compelling results thus far. So in light of Barbados' declining population and the Barbados' population policy, are there any steps to address the lack of data on fertility-related conditions like endometriosis, fibroids, et cetera, that cause reproductive health challenges like pregnancy loss, especially recurrent loss and infertility? And how can that be integrated into a national planning?
I genuinely don't know. But I'd like to suggest that there are too many Bayjans in the public health field in this country for us not to be making more breakthroughs with respect to our own domestic issues with our own public health. And as I said, if I wasn't interested in it, I would not have been meeting with Mr. Freedom, Tom Freedom, this evening. Health is one of the biggest issues. Health and water are two of the biggest issues that we have to confront as a nation. So I'd like to suggest to you that you share your compelling data.
I plan to.
And our Minister of Health, Senior Minister Walcott, was just Chair of the World Health Assembly. He is now going into a role with Pahu next week, I believe. And I would also still be responsible, I'm still responsible for the UN Health Global Alliance on antimicrobial resistance. And I've been cheering with Larry Summers, a commission with the Bloomberg Foundation on health financing and health taxes, et cetera. And the UN has just spoken to me about doing something else next year on health financing globally as well with the President of another nation globally. So these things are at the core. The reason why I say yes is that I know it makes the difference to our people.
Exactly.
And not only our people, but others like our people in the African diaspora in particular. Because we do not have access sometimes. Even if you had the ability to pay, you do not have access to a lot of the medication or the technology that would make a difference in the lives of our people. We want a level playing field. We have invested in the education of our people. A lot of you have gone into the field of healthcare. I'm saying to you, now is the time for you to focus on the healthcare of our people in the global south, and in particular in the African diaspora.
That's what my research is on, specifically Barbadian women.
So come home, because I know in this country also, there, come long home.
Please, I'm ready. I am so ready.
But I want this, we've also been trying to attract, look, the pharmaceutical industry. With the help of the European Union, we have a white book. We're now putting in place the regulations. How many people know that Barbados was making medication in a company? It was related, y'all would more know Collins Limited. You understand? A related company to that since 1892. And doing many fill and finish. But if you have that culture, why are we not doing more? So we're very much in the business of trying to attract more pharmaceutical companies, companies who make fluids or other things that a hospital will need. And that whole health ecosystem, we're trying to dominate, given the investment in education and the numbers in healthcare that we have, both locally and internationally. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, my dear.
Thank you.
Good luck. But send me the stuff, please. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Osinta James. I'm from St. Michael. I have three questions, but I'm gonna ask you two.
I'm gonna limit you to one.
I'm gonna ask you two.
I gotta limit you to one. Sorry.
My granddaughter goes to Wesley Hall School. And I wanna know, before, if they didn't know Wesley Hall School was, had to repair till now that she is in Class Four, and she's in Westbury School right now.
I'm not sure what you mean, but suffice it to say that most of our school plant has to undergo periodic repairs. And therefore, it depends on the state of the plant. Remember, you still have to do it while letting children go to school as well. So perhaps you can give us a little more information off mic, and we can find out what you really want to understand.
And the next thing, I was there for cricket.
Uh, uh, very fast, because they really only should let you one.
But then we get all the roads, we get tickets.
I don't even wanna know about, I don't even wanna know about that, because my problem is that I haven't seen enough Bayjans for the Barbados Royals team. And I felt we did better when we had the Barbados Trident, not the Barbados Royals. You know? Thank you.
Good evening, Prime Minister. So I'm an inventor, and I have three patents.
Yeah, one question though, one question. We're down to one now, everybody, please.
All right, so I-
Because we have less than 30 minutes in the place.
I have, I have two patents on new technology for light bulbs. I have a Canadian patent and a US patent. Worldwide, 66.9 billion in the estimate in 10 years.
You want to open a factory in Barbados? You, I just tell you, these matters cannot be discussed. So just speak to Senior Minister Stevens, right here. When, wait till he meet in then. I know you're anxious, but wait till he meet in then, and the Consul General and the Senior Minister will help you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Prime Minister. I am so happy that you opened this forum for anyone to come in. So my name is Dorit Lamont, aka Empress D. I'm happy to be here to be listening to your questions and answers. And I'm so proud of you being a female running a country.
Thank you, my dear.
Hello, girl power.
Thank you, thank you.
Just show these men that we can do it too.
Which means, which means I have to hold you to time and tell you thank you, and let's go to the next person.
No problem.
Thank you, love. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Madam Prime Minister. I am Sophia Holder from Georgia. I flew in today to have this conversation with you, just to meet up. I run the organization in Georgia, United Barbadians in Georgia. And we recently attached ourselves to two polyclinics in Barbados. We have the St. Philip Polyclinic and the St. Peter Polyclinic. We're coming in to do a beautification project coming up in October and bringing in some folks. So my question is, how can we live in here aboard, do more to help bring up the country? What can we do more? When I go back to Georgia, there's so much that we have and so much that we can give, right? And I get a lot of questions, and you've answered most of them in terms of the crime and so on and so forth. But what more can we do in terms of like what we're doing?
I think that the concept of twinning with specific institutions is a good one. But as I said, the key is management of information and databases. Because if we have a database and it shows that all 10 people who want to help polyclinics going for Morris Byer and the St. Philip Polyclinic, that can clearly work. And then you leave out Eunice Gibson down by me. And you leave out Black Rock Polyclinic, Bradford Tate Polyclinic. And you leave out Edgar Cockrane. But you understand my point? So that you need to utilize what the missions and the consulates are putting in place to register so that we can make sure that there are no traffic jams or log jams in the whole place. Can you imagine if there was no air traffic control tower at JFK? All right? This is the equivalent of having a regulated position so that we can manage people. And the technology is now there, it's given us a lot of bad. It can also give us some good. Let us use it. All right? Thank you.
And can I take this moment to also invite you to Georgia sometime to meet with us?
Yes, sir, come back again.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Caroline? This young lady started primary school, and yeah, we were in the same classroom, primary school.
You got me.
And she used to beat me, and she used to come first, and I used to come second.
I can see where that got me.
So my name is Caroline Holder. I hail from St. Michael. And I would like to make an inquiry about government efficiency. And the thing that I'm thinking about is, we were just talking about derelict houses in Barbados. But what happens when you inherit a property and you can't pay for it until probate? And in the meantime, while you're waiting for the money, you've inherited this thing you can't afford, and it falls down around your ears? Or you can't clean the bush? That was the first thing. I just wanted to say that the immigration department was woefully inefficient, and something magical has happened. Where you can step in there and get your passport in like a week. I mean, I don't know what it is, but how can we-
That's why we gave them a prize at Independence two years ago.
Yes.
And the truth is that they really upped their game and turned it around.
I'm just wondering how we could spread that efficiency.
Yeah, but that's why I said, on the first point, in fairness, the Chief Justice has been working and has brought down the backlog on probate. He inherited a woefully high backlog.
I'm sure.
And the truth is, look, let's get real, COVID licked Barbados.
Yes.
A lot of things, and a lot of people just basically were not able to do what they should do and could do. And then the backlogs just started to, and there's a point at which in life where things start avalanche, we like an avalanche, and it just coming at you, it starts. But then it got too much. So the systems that they've put in place now, they're doing two things. Working down to bring down the backlog and looking at new probate rules, because these probate rules are, oh, Kerry, about 60, 70 years old. And that's why I keep saying, he will tell you that I get frustrated because I use the word deconstruct and reconstruct so often. Because if we don't do it, we don't bring the country into the third decade of the 21st century. And, and the technology has propelled our people way ahead of us. So we've been successful in things like police certificate of character and payment of fees and a number of things. But we still have some way to go. The Barbados digital ID is helping us go further. And by the end of March, we should have a new digital payments ecosystem that will allow people at home to do a lot of the things you do up here just by being able to use this to transfer funds and pay bills and do all kinds of things.
Thank you. I would just-
Bear with us, it's a work in progress, my dear.
I would just like to suggest that before you penalize people for bush and buildings, they need to be able to pay for it.
Except that the problem is, is that there is a responsibility that still comes with ownership.
Yes.
And whether we like it or not, when you were in the town hall meeting in St. James three years ago and saw a lady come in there in a wheelchair who was the victim of a viral disease caused as a result of living next to a lot that had bush growing six and seven feet and all the vermin and all of that, you begin to understand that this is not something to play with. So I wish I could tell you otherwise, but the reality is that the price of ownership carries responsibility. And responsibility first and foremost, keep the bush under two foot. I ain't telling you two inches.
Thank you so much.
I tell you two foot.
Good night.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Prime Minister.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
It has been mentioned earlier about going back to planting to offset the high prices of food. My main question to you is how are we gonna get rid of the population of monkeys that reap everything that you plant?
I wanna come home by me. I come home and find one sitting down in the dining room. Swear to God.
There's nothing that you can plant.
But I live in Lodge Hill and that Lodge Hill used to be Lodge Hill Woods before.
There's nothing that you can plant.
The Ministry of Agriculture increased the bounty. But the truth is that we're gonna have to come up with different plans. And we're gonna have to do this in a sensible way that respects, yes, biodiversity. I have a Minister of Environment who is the king of biodiversity, Adrian Ford from Gecko's Right Back Up. But at the same time, there's a point at which you need balance. Because farmers at risk, small people at risk. And monkeys, for some reason, don't like women, women at risk. You think I'm joking? It's a fact. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, but we recognize that there are some issues, but we have to manage it.
Good evening, Madam Prime Minister. It is an honor to be here. My name is Maria Lawrence. I am a Doctor of Leadership and Organizational Psychology.
Wow.
And just listening to the updates and the intention for fundamental transformation has been an honor. This has been phenomenal. Thank you for all that you have done for our beloved island. I know it is in good hands.
Thank you.
So our sister Beulah earlier, she said, she expressed a desire for you to be Prime Minister forever. And we can all agree that as ideal as that would be, it is not possible. Your brand of visionary and humane leadership is impressive, but also, I'm sure, quite exhausting. We can't clone you, but we know that others can certainly learn from you. And that brings me to my question. What are you doing for succession planning so that your transformational impact will not be diluted or even fall off a bridge when you eventually leave office? I, this is what I study. Yeah.
Thank you. I think Kerry will tell you that I never saw myself as a teacher.
Yeah.
But I realized along the way that teaching is what you have to do. And I've been spending more time sharing and training. Kerry will tell you that I've been in different sessions across the party and across communities at least once a month now, trying to make sure that we can impart skills. And I want to make sure that people understand basic values and that those are reinforced. I don't know everything. I don't profess to. I cannot be all things to all people. But I try to do my best each and every day. And I want Bajans, you heard what I said, let us just do our jobs. Let us do our best. And secondly, let us care for one another. And I think that if we start with those two basics, commitment to excellence and a commitment to caring, then we can start to work on the other things. The other thing is, is that you have to see people, hear people, and feel people. Because if you don't see, hear, and feel, that caring is just not going to be there. As it relates to full succession planning, Mr. Barrow once said that, what was it again? He tried to say it in a way that suggested that that really was not for him to choose. And I think that Barbadians have, even because they've been thrown into it. Errol Barrow died in office, Tom Adams died in office, David Thompson died in office. Our best thing is to be able to create a pool of people from which someone can emerge and the public, the public, the public will determine who that person is at the end of the day. So we'll continue to raise the skills and we'll continue to reassure the public that they will have the opportunity to make that choice, just as they did with me and the others who went before me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Ali. I would like to say a thank you to all the Barbados delegation here this evening. But my main congratulation is to my Prime Minister, Mayor Motley. Congratulations, Mayor, for all the things you have done for Barbados.
Thank you.
I've been visiting Barbados and I saw all the changes you've been doing. I have listened to you talking in Parliament and I hear that Pan-African train in your voice. So my question to you is, are you contacting the Sahel states in Africa who are really making a big difference over there and trying to unite so that we can have a United States of Africa? Because we all know that this country does not have much use for Caribbean.
But...
And I'm a so-called American citizen. But I know with this regime, there's really no place for a citizen or an immigrant. So I think we should be looking at Africa. That's where we came from. And I, by God, who I...
I can say to you that on Thursday, for example, I will go with the President of Senegal to a special ceremony. And the President of Senegal has been doing tremendous work in bringing the states of the Sahel together. And we will continue to work with them. Two weeks ago, I went to the first ever in person, but the second CARICOM AU Africa Union Summit in Addis Ababa in Ethiopia, because we know we have to work together. And I said then that India and China have multiple ethnicities and language, but they are one country. So that to say that Africa cannot find its common purpose as the United States of Africa because of multiple boundaries and ethnicities is to ignore the fact that we always have the power to choose and that we can rise above that. And that if we did it, China has in excess of what, 1.4 billion? India in excess of 1.4 billion? And Africa in excess of 1.4 billion? But if Africa is fifty-five states, that 1.4 billion will not have the power of India or China.
All the gold, yeah.
Okay, so we will continue to work together. But suffice it to say that the sixth region of Africa is the Caribbean, is the African diaspora, of which the CARICOM community, the Caribbean community is a significant part and hence the meetings last week. And I trust and pray that we will continue to find common purpose. But the first thing we must do is to bridge the transport, air and sea. And until that is done, nobody's going to believe us that we are serious about acting in one common purpose. Thank you.
Okay, I'm so proud of you.
And that's one of the reasons we also brought the Afrexim Bank. Barbados is the location of the only branch outside of Africa of the Afrexim Bank, which has been a highly successful export and port trade bank with a number of platforms that has made a difference across Africa today. So we're very happy to have had that there. Yes?
All right.
Everything to the right now.
Good evening, Honorable Prime Minister Motley. My name is Leanne Harris. And although I'm not Bajan, I'm a proud first-generation Jamaican-American and I'm wearing my Shirley Chisholm pin right now on bottom of my bos. My question for you is, what advice would you give to other Caribbean countries looking to strengthen, decolonize, and equitably expand their education systems to serve the needs of their population and combat brain drain?
I'm just going to say that, to give you a quick answer because of the time, CARICOM has been trying to settle a CARICOM Educational Transformation Commission for those countries within the Caribbean community who want it. Because we recognize that we need to do things at scale. If we don't attack this problem of decolonizing our educational system and making it fit for purpose for our citizens today, we're not going to have a platform to be able to protect sovereignty or to be able to protect community and family. And to that extent, that is why we've asked, what is it that must be at the core? And I repeat it again, values and attitudes, critical skills, literacy, numeracy, discernment, critical thought, and then commitment to excellence and caring, and then the development of social and emotional learning targets. There are too many children who are coming out without having understanding as to how their social and emotional development can take them on track or off track. And if we focus on that architecture, rather than teaching people by rote, you can get information here anytime, but you have to give them the skills, the values, and the attitudes that will make the difference so that they can readily relearn at any stage of their development. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And keep up the interest.
Good evening, Prime Minister Motley. My name is Melanie Painter. Although I was born in Trinidad...
I'm not hearing you, so you have to hold the mic. All right, thank you.
Hearing me now? Okay. My name is Melanie Painter. And although I was born in Trinidad, my great uncle was Melville Williams' celebrated centenarian who died in 2021 at 111. You might have heard of him. I am the Managing Editor here for Carib News, the authentic voice of the Caribbean-American community.
Good to meet you.
You've mentioned several new initiatives that are responses to the policies being instituted here by the government. This is happening across the region. My question is, how can media better support the nation-states, particularly Barbados, in supporting Caribbean Americans in these times as we navigate messaging? In other words, what would you like to see more from us?
By one, encouraging all Caribbean people to act together. You're not going to make serious inroads if you try to walk this road alone as Trinidadians, as Bajans, as Guyanese. There's a reason why solidarity matters. There's a reason why the unions of the world start first with the principle that solidarity always, we need to work together. There are issues that are of immediate concern to our community here, from immigration right back through to opportunities, right back through to the absence of DEI and fairness to be able to compensate for the inequity that was there before. We need to have a strong voice and a focused agenda. Many hands make light work, but always remember you cannot boil the ocean. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Honorable Prime Minister Motley, it is an honor to be here. And I thank you so much for visiting the only island in the United States, Brooklyn. I am also first American born to two Bajan parents, one from St. Joseph and one's from St. John. Back in 2014, I started an organization named Digital Girl Inc. And our mission is to empower Black and Brown people, particularly the youth, to pursue careers in science, technology, engineering, and math. It's always been a dream of mine to take this vision to Barbados. I was in talks with the consulate back in 2019 for the week gathering. And then COVID hit and then that was that. Back in May, I was invited to speak at the UN House in regards to youth in STEM. And I sat alongside women from St. Lucia, Antigua, Ghana, all with the same mission. After I left there, I was so empowered, I decided, you know, I was going to launch a virtual program that is open to the United States, the Caribbean, and Ghana. We launched it in the summer. It was very, very successful. And so we are teaching computer science and the like online. It is completely free. We have never charged for our programming. Over 10,000 students served and never charged our students directly.
Have you met the Consul General?
I have not. Met the new Consul General. No, I have not.
And this is the Deputy Consul General here.
It's such a pleasure to meet you.
Can I please ask you to meet with them?
Yes.
And to share what you're doing? Look, we do not have enough of our children in science and in mathematics, in technology and in engineering. This week, we hope to sign an agreement, a letter of intent with the government of Qatar that will see them co-sponsoring with Barbados the retraining of all of the mathematics teachers with a college in Canada over the course of the next few years. I'll give more details as the week goes on. But suffice it to say that this is an area of immediate interest. Our people, our people will not rise unless we take control of the capacity to invent, to innovate, and to maintain those things that are good. And if we just have to rely on other people, we will never get there. And that is why also the history of the excellence, history of excellence with those people of color who have made a difference in the world in which we live today over the course of centuries, through their innovations, through their inventions. We need to teach people and not just in February in Black History Month.
That's right. Thank you. I just wanna add that Ghana showed out. Ghana showed up every week during the summer. They had the most students, no one from Barbados. And so that, you know, is perfect with, you know...
That's why I'm telling you.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Please talk to the Consul General and the deputy. But I also want to say to Bajans, as much as I may want it, as your Prime Minister, participation is not going to come unless parents and grandparents and godparents and aunties and uncles say, get up and go and enroll in that or encourage people to want to do those things. So let us not waste opportunity. I'll make this last point. We take for granted what, as I said, successive governments have done. And I think we are at a point now where we have to share the value of what we offer to citizens so that citizens will know that if it wasn't for this policy, I would have to look for X amount of money. I can't tell you what the per capita cost off the top of my head is in education today. But when I was Minister of Education, it was about between $3,800 and $4,000 per student in secondary school. It has clearly gone up since then. If you have one child, two children, three children, you ought to know that this is what the government of Barbados, through the taxpayers, is paying for you. And to that extent, I think we need to experiment with giving people invoices with zero balances so that you see the costs. You then see that there's been a payment made by the government of Barbados and you then see that there's a balance of zero. Because the child and the parent and the grandparents must appreciate that sacrifices are being made to be able to allow persons to benefit in circumstances where in other countries in the world, they don't even have schools to be able to get to, far less somebody pay for their education to get to school. I can transpose that to healthcare. We go into the hospital. We don't know what it costs. We need to be able to let people know that this is the cost so that we manage wastage and we can do these things and boost appreciation for what is happening. We need to do it. It's partially done, I think, in the pharmaceutical area where if you go for medication, the private pharmacy will give you and show you the amount. But then it will show you that your balance may be zero or next skin to nothing other than maybe a service charge. But I think we've reached the point, if we do not recognize the importance of appreciating the value of what is being done for us, we are at risk of taking it for granted and removing the very foundation that made us strong. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you. I want to encourage you to remain Bajan citizens. Those of you who are and those of you who need to become, come long home. I want to say to you, however, that do not ever forget your Bajan roots. And let us continue to work, however, as part of a great Caribbean civilization and the African diaspora to which we belong. Thank you and God bless you all. Thank you for coming out. And thank the consulate and everyone for arranging this evening. And thank the Senior Minister for his wonderful opening innings. Thank you.